And so while Carrie is pulling people over from the attendee list, I see that's happening as, as we speak, I'll call the meeting to order and read the opening statement. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting given by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on the 12th day of October 2020. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/meetings. And then you need to choose the planning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings for the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Regarding public comment, please note that as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the bottom center of your Zoom screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. For those who do offer comments, we ask that you please do your best to keep your comments to roughly three minutes or less, and that you activate the camera on your device so that the board and other meeting participants and attendees may see you. If you don't know how to do that, we can guide you through it. When it's your turn to speak, our attorney, Mr. Muller, will swear you in and ask you to state your name and spell it for the record. And after that happens, you can go right ahead with your testimony. Any inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. If you're having difficulty accessing the raise hand feature, use the Q and A dialogue box for assistance. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Carrie, can I ask that you give me co-host privileges? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that. So announcements, we are planning to, or in the process of scheduling a special meeting in November. The date right now is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, November 17. We have a lot of stuff coming before us that we need to get to before the end of the year. That night would be the project at 17 Witherspoon that, for which there was improper notice, not once but twice. So finally, we'll be getting to that. And the Pearl development that is adjacent to the project that we'll be looking at tonight. And I also just wanted to say that since we're starting early tonight, we're definitely going to take at least one break. I'm thinking, you know, in the neighborhood of 8:30 or so. You know, to make it as easy as possible to get through, you know, what will be surely a long meeting. Jerry, do you have an announcement as well?
I do. The board members might recall that I talked at the beginning of the Princeton Academy hearing to advise the public and ask the public not to make any written communications to any board members or oral communications, even if they just happen to bump into them somewhere in town. Because all the communications have to be in the context of the hearing on the application. And there's a couple of reasons for that. That's for the record. It's so that the attorneys would have an opportunity to cross-examine people. And in addition, if you're doing that, some members of the board might have information that other members of the board don't have, and we can't have that. And I've advised the board previously, and I'll advise them again, that if they do get any written communications, they should disregard them. They should not read them. And if somebody tries to speak to them, just politely tell them that they've been advised, you've been advised that you can't do that. And that's the announcement.
Okay, thank you. So before us tonight, anybody else have any announcements? Board members or staff or professionals? Okay. The first and only application tonight is Princeton Thanet Road Urban Renewal LLC. This is preliminary and major, excuse me, preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision at 100-101 Thanet Road, block 5002, lot four, file number P1919-879P/SPF. And the deadline for taking action on this is January 9. I think for all practical purposes, it's before that because there will be a new planning board, or, you know, some members of the planning board will change. Anyway, that's a little editorial, which was unnecessary for me. So because of people's schedules, we're going to go a little bit out of the usual order tonight. Michael La Place will introduce this, and then we'll sort of go straight into Sprab's memo because Mr. Wolf has only until 7:30, and then he's got to bounce to another meeting. So Mr. La Place, and then Sprab, and then the applicant can begin its presentation. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to state for the record, proof of publication and service are proper, as is the notice, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. I'm really bad about asking that. Thanks. Mr. La Place?
All right. Acting Chair, members of the board and members of the public, thank you. Before you this evening is an application for preliminary, preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for a site which the chair already noted was at 101 Thanet Road. It's about a 15-acre property. It's located on Thanet Road, which is a cul-de-sac on the north side of Terre Haute Road, which is, and this is just east of North Harrison Street. It's currently the site of two empty office buildings, brick office buildings that are three stories each, and there's surface parking lots. They're both vacant, the buildings. To the north and the west are office research and institutional uses. To the east is the Governor's Lane Residential Development. And to the south towards the Terre Haute Road corridor are single-family homes. The proposed plan is for construction of a 221-unit residential development and subdivision approval to create a second lot where a proposed 80-unit senior housing development will be located, and that'll be the subject of a separate site plan hearing. It is a permitted use in the IRA zone, which was set up in response to our redevelopment plan for this site, which you'll be hearing more about. As I said, there's two empty office buildings and currently unused surface parking. There is infrastructure in place for stormwater and drainage that you'll hear about this evening. The site is considered obsolete in that, as you all know, central New Jersey has a very overbuilt office market, and these office buildings in particular are not on a major highway. They don't have high visibility, and they have not been updated. So they're considered rather obsolete, and that explains why they've been vacant for some time. The proposal is to find a new use for them, to make them a more economically viable part of the Princeton and regional economy and community. So it's important to note that this is part of Princeton's fair share housing plan. On this 221-unit Avalon Bay market rate housing project will itself generate 11 affordable housing units. And that's part of our, getting to our target that we have to accomplish as a community in our fair share plan. And that, along with the 80 units that will be on the second lot to be created of senior housing, they're both major components of our fair share plan. Staff considers this a smart growth initiative in that it's redevelopment of a site that's already been developed, and that it'll hopefully be even a higher and better use. It'll provide affordable housing. We're hoping it will be better connected and have better circulation and weave more into the community than when it was sort of an isolated office complex served by a cul-de-sac alone. So the site plan consists of mostly townhouses. A group of the townhouses will be along Thanet Road, and they'll be in proximity to the single-family neighborhoods to the south. And then another section of townhouses will be on the easterly end of the site towards the Governor's Lane Residential Neighborhood. So they kind of reflect those two existing areas in terms of scale and massing. And then towards the center of the site will be several multi-unit resident, multi-level residential structures, which you'll hear the applicant detail. These have also been broken up in terms of massing to create green open spaces. So that was an important negotiation with Sprab and with officials, representatives of the municipality and the applicant. So those are some of the highlights. Major issues that you'll be hearing about this evening is how the stormwater and drainage system is to be upgraded and brought up to current standards to serve this new development. And a very important component has been making the site accessible to the public and to its residents, both pedestrian, bicyclists, vehicular, and also transit users. We wanted to really transform Thanet Road into more of a complete street in terms of serving all users and to have the whole site be more integrated into the surrounding Princeton network of pathways and transportation services. So those are some of the highlights. And unless there's any questions for me, I'll hand it over to Mr. Wolf, the Chair of the Site Plan Review Advisory Board.
You know, Michael, I didn't swear you in, right? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you gave and will continue to give will be, was and will be the truth?
Yes.
That's fine. Bill, if you could raise your right hand?
Bill?
Bill? Could you unmute yourself?
With your left hand.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
William A. Wolf, W-O-L-F-E.
So Bill, do you want to take us through the Sprab memo? You know, this is sort of out of our usual sequential order. You know, I, sorry to stammer, but Mr. Purcell, is there anything that you want to say quickly before the Sprab? Or are we okay from your perspective?
I think we're okay, as long as the presentation isn't overly long. We have Joe Scoopian to talk about stormwater management. He's been in communication with the applicant's engineer, and they are working out details. It appears everything will be fine with stormwater management, but I'd like to hear from Joe and their engineer this evening for testimony. And I didn't get sworn in, Jerry. This isn't testimony, I guess. You want to swear me in? You're muted.
You're muted, Jerry.
I know what he's saying. I do. It should be on the recording, Jerry, right?
Okay. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do. And has been.
Full name, spell your full name.
But I just wanted to say that Joe has to leave us at nine o'clock, so.
Oh, nine o'clock. Okay.
I think it's important that the applicant get to get through their presentation because I think a lot of questions will be answered during that time. And then if Joe will be allowed to jump in, we can stop and ask questions at that time and answer whatever questions people have about stormwater.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject for a moment. Peter Flannery with Law from of Bizgairh Hoff on behalf of the applicant, Princeton Thanet Road Urban Renewal LLC. Just as a point of order, it might be best, just piggybacking on what Mr. Purcell had mentioned, having the applicant swear in the engineer and start testimony. And in that way, the testimony could address many of the comments, including Sprab comments that have been raised. It just might be a little more efficient, just a suggestion.
Sure. Why don't we swear in whoever, I guess that means really all of the professionals whose work might be addressed
I think that's a great idea, Madam.
In the Sprab memo.
Madam Chair, just quickly, it's Jeffrey Oakman. I just wanted to say, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the roll call, but I just wanted to reflect that I'm here for the testimony.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I could add to that, Jeffrey did arrive before we started the application.
Correct. Thanks.
So Jerry, can you quickly swear in the applicant's professionals? And then we'll go right ahead with Mr. Wolf.
The applicant's professionals are going to testify. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
You do.
So I just want to affirm, if you could each state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, I'll start. My name is Brett Scapinetz. Last name is S-K-A-P-I-N-E-T-Z. I'm the site engineer with Dynamic Engineering Consultants in Chester, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Corey Chase, last name C-H-A-S-E, and I'm with Dynamic Traffic.
Are you a traffic engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Joseph J. Scoopian, I'm Princeton's stormwater consultant.
Okay.
Also have Tom Carmen and Edward Bradford and Daniel Senol.
Tom Carmen with Malillo and Bauer Associates, licensed landscape architect, C-A-R-M-A-N.
You're muted, Edward.
Ed, you're going to have to unmute.
Thank you. Edward Bradford, B-R-A-D-F-O-R-D. I'm with TAT and architect for the applicant.
Dan.
And I am Daniel Schnal, last name is S-E-H-N-A-L. Also a site civil engineer with Dynamic Engineering in Chester, New Jersey.
Thank you.
And one more point of order, Madam Chair, Mr. Muller. We did submit resumes of our professionals to the planning board staff, but we can briefly go through their education, experience, qualifications, and licensure to qualify them for the board. If, Mr. Muller?
Okay.
I defer to you as to what approach you want to take.
I think you're going to have to do that. Louise, I'm not sure exactly what the procedure is now. After we qualify them, are we going to go back to Bill?
Yes, and I'm a little concerned that we're eating into Bill's time, but if we can quickly qualify.
Well, we could do that afterwards. We could have Bill testify first.
Can we do it piecemeal as they weigh in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Appropriate. Okay, let's do that then.
That makes sense.
Chair, I think at this point, we need to have Bill go through his report and have him respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Michael, for inviting me. I should say at the outset that a lot of the comments are very, very specific and detailed, and it would be helpful if board members had a copy of either the landscape plan or one of the site plans in front of them. I think my brief description will make a lot more sense if you can see the plan. The first recommendation was based on the fact that the municipality had recently passed an ordinance in endorsing the current New Jersey Senate Bill 2051. And because it limits lightwood construction to three stories, if the developer were to comply with it, they would have to build their five-story building in fire-resistant construction and not lightwood framing. We asked the applicant if they would voluntarily comply with Senate Bill 2051, and they did not agree to comply. But they did say that they will do certain things to improve fire safety that included bringing fire-rated masonry walls between the units up to the roofs and providing complete sprinkler system. I think maybe tonight they'll enumerate more things. We wanted to point out that the bike circulation on Terre Haute Road is very important to the project and that bike-share lanes or sharrows or bike boulevard designation should be considered for Thanet Road, and it should be compatible with the bicycle master plan on Terre Haute Road. The next was, since 12 parking spaces on the site are provided in excess of the parking requirement, 12 spaces on the site should be replaced with pervious surfaces. No more impervious coverage should be constructed than is required, and Sprab recommends that the parallel parking spaces along Thanet Road be removed to increase bicycle safety. One of the proposed driveways for this development is too close to the driveway for the adjacent proposed age-restricted development or Pearl as they meet Thanet Circle. Sprab recommends that the southern portion of the Avalon Bay parking lot connected to this drive should be bent or curved to provide further separation from the Pearl Drive and align the Avalon Bay drive with the center of the circle so it would come in perpendicular as drives should. The applicant should consider providing six-foot-wide sidewalk on both sides of Thanet Road with green space separating pedestrians from automobiles and street trees to provide shade as per the complete streets recommendations. The location of this residential community has an important pedestrian connection to the Princeton Shopping Center. We think that's one of the main reasons this is a good site, is its proximity to the shopping center. And it's important to provide pedestrian and senior-friendly amenities such as benches along the sidewalk, especially close to the intersection of Terre Haute and Thanet Roads. Combined pedestrian and bicycle pathways to the Princeton Healthcare Center at 419 North Harrison, the Princeton Charter School, and Bun Drive, leading to Hilltop Park are highly recommended. For example, the pathway that roughly follows the north boundary with the Pearl site could be extended with a crosswalk to the Western Property Line, which appears to be about 15 feet from the driveway of the adjacent commercial property. The applicant has had no responses from adjacent property owners. Sprab requests that Avalon Bay continue to pursue permission to construct these connections and that the municipality assist in that effort. I think it's important that we have our own staff contact the neighbors along with Avalon Bay. We did a careful review of the sidewalks around the complex. In multiple places, the sidewalks should follow more natural walking patterns rather than doggedly following the edge of the parking. This will reduce the amount of pavement and ease circulation by small children riding their bikes, residents walking their dogs, or just taking strolls. The sidewalk layout should not be tied only to direct access of every individual parking space. And we have four specific places on the site plan where we have recommendations. The first, replace the right angle Z-shaped jog in the sidewalk east of the Sales and Amenity Building A with a gentle reverse curve to rejoin the sidewalk near Thanet Circle. Second, the far northern corner of the same sidewalk has an acute angle that follows the parking stalls on both the east and northwest sides of Building B. The sidewalk should turn with an outside radius of about 30 feet instead of that acute angle. And about seven parking spaces would then front onto landscaping rather than sidewalk. Both sidewalks converging towards the western entrance to the Building B near the bike room should connect directly to each other and to the entrance. The corner of the parking should have landscaping that meets this sidewalk with a gentle curve. And the fourth, there's a long sidewalk proposed along Building D connecting to the dog park and maintenance area, and another sidewalk on the northwest side of Building B. The islands at the corners of the parking lots should be reconfigured to extend and join these long sidewalks with a crosswalk. I think if you have the plan before you, you'll see that that's an obvious improvement to the overall circulation. There are many trees on the existing site that are larger than what is proposed for new replacement trees in the landscape plan. Consider saving and replanting existing trees on site and add this to the tree preservation versus cutting plan. This would provide the site with a larger canopy and better stormwater management. And in the comments section, I think our landscape architects make specific suggestions for that. There are two existing retention basins on the site. The applicant testified that one basin will be cleared of existing vegetation to restore its detention capacity, and the other will be left alone so that its wetlands vegetation can be utilized to enhance runoff quality. Sprab encourages this concept, but only if our stormwater consultant, Joe Scoopian, confirms that the stormwater management plan meets the requirements. In other words, the math's got to work, and we did not have the benefit of a report from Joe when we were reviewing it. So we basically didn't get into the storm management. Pervious pavement is proposed for the driveways of the townhouses. Additional pervious installations should be considered. The proposed bus stop at Thanet Circle should include a roof shelter. They may well have intended that, but that wasn't clear in the presentation. Again, in the comments section, you'll see a recommendation that to that bus stop, a map of Princeton should be added to help people find their way around town. A green roof should be considered on the clubhouse. It would help reduce runoff and energy use, and it would also improve the views from the multiple apartments that otherwise would be looking out at asphalt parking lots and roofs. Special attention should be paid to maximizing clear roof area for future solar installations on all other Special attention should be paid to maximizing clear roof area for future solar installations on all other structures. Vents and other roof penetrations should be avoided on the roofs with favorable solar orientation. And we mentioned that because it wasn't done on the first Avalon Bay and that greatly inhibited later their ability to add solar, which they've done some. Careful review of materials to ensure that vents, HVAC grills, windows, and trim are of colors and used that match or blend to the surrounding facade materials. That's unlike Avalon Witherspoon. And we ask that they consider earth colors instead of white for these. Finally, fiber cement should be considered instead of vinyl siding. When selecting the exact materials on the facade, consider adjacent uses. More durable materials such as fiber cement and stone veneer should be used at the ground floor and on balconies where people can touch it. I urge you to look at the comments section. There's some more comments about sidewalk improvements. And especially, I'd recommend that you look at Mr. Goodheart's suggestions for improving landscape planning details. One that I'm going to point out, because it's probably controversial, is that he recommends that non-native, non-native but non-invasive plants could be used where they may be more successful in this densely paved environment, that planting is restricted to native only. In other words, this is far from a natural site and the heat buildup and other factors that you're going to have may make it very difficult for native shrubs to survive. So that we think in this case that we might loosen the requirement that only native species be used. Okay, I think that's it. Then I'd like to take any questions.
Are there questions from board members or any professionals wanting to add to what Mr. Wolf has said or comment on anything that's in the memo, Mr. La Place?
Just more of a process comment. I believe that the applicant has prepared responses to all the staff reports, including Sprab. So I'm, I feel pretty confident from what I've been told that all those points will be addressed.
Okay.
Just so you know that, since we've got things a little out of order tonight.
Right, okay. Ms. Sax?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that to the point about reaching out to some of the neighbors about connecting the pathways, the, I think it's the medical building and there are several other businesses there. The applicant has, has been very receptive to that. I counsel dropped the ball on that. We made some outreach but haven't been successful, but we will continue to do that. That's in our, in our court.
So I'm uncertain about whether the applicant should, Mr. Texarney, you unmuted yourself. Did you have a question?
No, not a question really for Mr. Wolf, but mainly a question about process. It seems like Michael said that the applicant has addressed the memos. And so I was wondering whether I should kind of read off some of PEC's memo and sort of summarize that.
I think rather than, than go that route with, with memos before, I think the applicant should present, should make their presentation. And I also want to be mindful of what Mr. Purcell said about Mr. Scoopian's availability. So the applicant can present the project with an eye toward making sure that we address all stormwater-related questions before nine o'clock at the very latest, then, then we can get through the applicant's, at least a big chunk of the applicant's presentation and deal with the memos from advisory committees and municipal boards and committees after that. Now, having said that, I know that there, Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger presented a very thorough memo with a lot of comments. And if we want to go through that before the applicants.
Madam Chair.
Sorry to be so uncertain about this.
No, 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 Madam Chair. Mr. La Place is correct that we have answers to all the memos. I think it would be much more efficient for the applicant to start its presentation. We can go through, address, make up a lot of time addressing comments from all the memos instead of going piecemeal through each memo and spending the rest of the night going through a few memos.
Mr. La Place and Mr. Purcell, is that okay with both of you?
Thank you, Mr. Bridger and Mr. Purcell, because it's fine with me.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's fine with me.
Okay, great. Mr. Flannery, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. My first witness, who's previously sworn, Mr. Brett Scapinets, Dynamic Engineering. Mr. Scapinets, just very quickly, if you could go through your education experience and licensure for the board?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Again, Brett Scapinets with Dynamic Engineering Consultants. I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm currently a director with Dynamic Engineering Consultants located in Chester, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer and planner in the state. Been licensed for over 20 years and qualified and been qualified before over 120 boards, planning and zoning on a multitude of various projects within the state. I was before Princeton, I want to say about 15, 20 years ago, for the CVS and Commerce Bank on the edge of town there on 206. So it was a while ago, but I'm glad to be back.
Thank you, Mr. Scapinets. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Scapinets, we have an application exhibit package which we had submitted. It's sort of a joint exhibit prepared by all the professionals. I believe you have that. You could share your screen. It's pre-marked. Took the liberty of pre-marking the exhibit package, A1 through A18.
Right. And I'm going to go, I'm going to focus on one sheet for my presentation and that would be the landscape sheet. And I don't know the, it's A11.
A11.
And I'll pull that up on the screen.
Yeah.
So if I, typically when doing this, I ask for a couple nods just to make sure everyone sees my screen.
It's in process. There we go.
There we go. Yes. Okay, I got some nods. Good.
And Mr. Scapinets, just really briefly, the application is essentially two applications. One for preliminary and final major subdivision approval, the other for preliminary and final major site plan. So we wanted to go just very quickly through the subdivision aspects of the application first. It's relatively non-controversial and there are very few comments regarding that. Get through that quickly. And then we can go into the site plan and address all of the review memos.
Right. Yep. Very important that we establish those lots as the base. I agree. So in the exhibit, I'm outlining the majority of the property. This is, again, as I won't go through as described before by Mr. La Place, but just to orient ourselves, this is Terre Haune Road off to the left. We have Thanet Road coming in to the circle. The product, sorry, the governor's is off the page to the bottom right. We, the parcel outline is the thin black line as you follow my hand clockwise around the page. This is the entirety of the 15-acre parcel that is the current condition today. One lot with the office buildings, as mentioned earlier, our proposal is to subdivide the parcel into three lots. We're designating them as A on the southern end of the parcel, which is at the corner of Thanet and Terre Haune. We are calling Lot B, the lot to be set aside for senior housing. And then we're saying Lot C is the balance of the tract for the, the majority of the proposed residential development located off to the northeast corner of the tract. What's important to note is in subdividing these parcels, this has been done in accordance with the redevelopment plan such that the combined area of A and C, the subject application this evening, meets the requirement where 12.4 acres is required. We're at 12.86 acres. And then the balance, Lot B, is required to be a minimum of 80,000 square feet. That lot is proposed at 94,355 square feet. The dimensions of these lots fall in compliance with the plan. So we essentially have a conforming subdivision in accordance with the redevelopment plan that's been established for the lot.
And just really quickly, the subdivision for all three lots is on the agenda tonight. But the site plan for the Lot B, the Pearl, that's a different application in terms of a site plan. So that will be presented at a later date before the board. We have a site plan for the other two lots will be tonight. Thank you.
That's correct. So if there's, unless there's any other questions on that, I'll move into the site plan.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we've described the existing conditions. We've described the subdivision. Now let's go into the proposal for the development. I'm going to, in total, there are 12 buildings proposed, four buildings on Lot A and additional eight buildings on Lot C. Lot A is for townhome buildings. And on Lot C, we have a breakdown of townhome buildings, three of which are on the eastern end of the property. Residential buildings, which are C, D, and B, the clubhouse, which is noted on this plan. And then the maintenance building, which is in the upper northwest corner of the site. The, to go back to Lot A, Lot A, we propose the four townhome buildings. Circulation to the site is proposed via a full movement driveway at the, at the southern end of the proposed development. That two-way driveway extends through the property and then finishes with an egress driveway only out, back out to Thanet. And this was proposed to help facilitate easier movements for delivery and especially emergency vehicles that might enter into the site. The, moving over, so the one thing I do want to actually go back to that I did not note on the existing conditions that is important is that in the southern portion of the property, you will see the wooded area that contains the two detention basins. One just off to the west of the proposed townhomes, a secondary detention basin, the one which is to be cleared and modified right, right about the word, beginning of the word townhomes. And then the tributary to Harry's Brook that runs along from in an easterly or westerly to easterly direction along and parallel to Terre Haune within that wooded area. The majority of Lot C is all currently developed now with the office buildings. So again, to move on now to C and its proposed circulation and driveways. We are proposing, as noted, two driveways to Lot C. If we start, as we're heading up Thanet, as we get to the circle, the first driveway on our right is a proposed two-way driveway access. And we maintain that two-way circulation counterclockwise as I'm moving my cursor through the site, which continues straight forward. And we've coordinated with Pearl and their plans and access connection to their development just out in front of the maintenance building. And or if we back up and we are circulating around Building C, we can make a left and continue out back to the circle, full movement access and a full movement driveway out to the circle, continuing out to Thanet. And that reverse movement can happen as well, where someone can enter in off of the circle at the northern point of the circle, that secondary access drive, as I just noted, and circulate back through. We propose 332 parking spaces for the proposed development with an additional 12 parking spaces out located parallel with Thanet Road. It's important to note that we did read through the, the final version of the redevelopment plan. And we picked up in some of the notes that were provided as part of that, that there was some suggestion to provide parking along Thanet. And we've done so. And that's where, where we've provided the 12 parallel spaces. That total number of spaces meets the ordinance requirement. That's for the total number. We also, within the site, you will see various other features called out. So we have amenities which will go be detailed a bit further with our architect and our landscape architect, which is a dog run. We have an amenity courtyard outside Building B. There's another set of amenities between the clubhouse and Building B, including a pool. We note the bus stop that was talked about earlier, which is just before the first driveway on the right, heading up Thanet. And, and obviously, we have now various landscape, various landscaping proposed throughout the site. There is, off the maintenance building is the main trash facility location. This is a 20-foot-by-20-foot masonry trash enclosure where garbage that's collected from the apartment buildings B, C, and D will be collected and brought to that location. The townhomes are expected to have their own individual trash pickup at those locations. And we're proposing it to be done via private trash hauler. When we look at the layout, it's important to note that we are, this has been designed in full conformance with the inclusionary rental apartment district zoning. So therefore, we are meeting all setbacks, coverages, building height, density. Essentially, all the bulk standards that are set within the plan are met. We're not seeking any variances with regards to the layout.
And really quickly, Mr. Scapinets, there were some variances called out in the Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger's memo regarding landscape islands, shade trees. We're going to modify the plan so that we'll comply with those provisions.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
One, one thing to touch on with regards to the parking spaces, I do want to note that included in the 332 parking spaces are also ADA spaces, which are required to be spread throughout the site. So we've spread them. I'll just circle, we have a couple spaces outside Building B where I'm circling now. There's a couple outside the clubhouse, outside Building D, Building C. So we, and so we've, we've provided that in accordance with ADA requirements. Moving on to grading, which is a very important part of our site layout and design. Right now, the site, if we look at the word dog run and the, the notes underneath it, this is the high point of the site, this northwesterly end of the site. And if you look at the current conditions, generally speaking, the flow of stormwater, if a drop is hitting the parking lot of the office building, it's flowing in generally a southeasterly direction. Within the office building complex, there are a series of inlets and piping that takes that stormwater and draws it across Thanet and into the two basins that are on the southerly end of our parcel. We are proposing, under our proposed conditions, to maintain similar grading patterns. We're still going to have a high point. The higher point of our site is at the maintenance building. And as we run through the site, our, our site will drop sort of following the existing conditions as we head downs towards the townhomes EF and G. When we get over to the four townhomes on parcel A, generally speaking, that stormwater runoff runs again from a northerly to a southerly direction. We are again maintaining that similar drainage and grading patterns. So when we talk about grading, obviously, we are talking about drainage. Actually, one more set thing on grading. With the grading, we are introducing a few retaining walls of approximately four feet in height on average. One wall is behind Building C. There's a wall behind, next to Building G, another one in the main parking field between Thanet and Building G. And then there's another wall being proposed just to the north of Building H. The area, by the way, between Pearl and Building H contains a New Jersey American Water easement. So we're abiding and looking to maintain that easement. And that was one of the reasons for that wall. So with the grading and maintaining the grading patterns, we're also maintaining similar drainage patterns. So with our proposed development, and I'm going to focus on the main portion of development C. We're essentially taking the drainage inlets, piping, and we're reorganizing it, for better words. To again, collect the runoff that is part of this proposed reconfiguration of new buildings, parking and, and drive aisles. And taking that stormwater runoff and again, directing it over towards the two, we, I'll call them the regional basins on our site. With this proposed development, however, we are slightly increasing impervious coverage, which does slightly increase runoff. At attributed to the additional impervious. So as a matter of dealing with that, what we have done is we've, we are proposing modifications to the outlet structure. Of the second basin, that is just to the right of the word townhomes, where I'm circling my hand right now. If you look in that plan, we show modification to the outlet structure there. To be able to provide modification to further detain the water, to control the additional runoff. Not only to control the additional runoff with the additional impervious on lots from lot C. But to bring it now into conformance with this current state regulations. Realize that this development here, when those basins were developed, they were pre the current regulations in, in place by the state. Under NJAC seven colon eight. So what we get to do under this proposal is not only take those basins and utilize them, but bring them up essentially to. I guess up to speed with current regulations through the modification of the outlet structure. And take this runoff and now have it meet state code or reduce the amount of runoff coming off the site. By various percentage points given, depending on the various storms, two, 10, and 100 year storms that would be falling on it. Well, when you look at parcel A. That area right now is undeveloped. So that area contains mainly woodlands. There are some open areas outside of the basin, but mainly all vegetation. So when we look at that area, we're now introducing new impervious coverage there and increasing it. So in order to control the runoff from the paving and buildings. We are proposing a stormwater detention basin that will be located within the drive aisle between these buildings H and IJ and K. And we're also proposing a treatment device for water quality. That will meet the 80% TSS removal requirement for that new impervious coverage. The basin will, will choke back the runoff that is being generated by then impervious coverage. And then we'll discharge it back to the basins. That will again now provide a, that, that will provide the means to comply with both the state regulations. Your state regulations as well as your township code for that portion of the development. I'll continue to, I know that Mr. Scoopian is on, I worked with Mr. Scoopian for many, many years. I know he's very well respected and, and obviously I think, if I'm not mistaken, I know we've, we worked on the project back in. The CVS and Commerce Bank that I mentioned earlier. So I know he's been in Princeton for a, a long while then. I saw his letter, we reviewed it in detail once, as soon as we saw it, we called Mr. Scoopian. And went through it in detail with him. We followed up with him, I spoke with him actually today, a little bit further. And in general, while we do recognize there are modifications that need to be made to our drainage designs. Both for parcel A and C. I do not feel that is anything insurmountable. It is, there are comments that we can take care of and make the changes. And addresses a letter, I think, fully. So. I know that he has further information and has done analysis on the tributary on Harry's Brook. So we'll work with him in order to incorporate any of his comments with the late, in relation to that, to our proposed design. Lastly, I have to talk about utilities. All utilities do exist to the site with exception of gas, which we are looking to extend up Turhune Road to bring into the site. We will be making modifications to make a new connection for sewer. There's currently one to the office buildings, but we will be providing a new network of piping to connect sanitary sewer, bring that down Thanet. As it currently does today and making new connections for the townhomes on parcel A. Water will also be brought into the site. These brick buildings will be spring, have both fire and domestic water connections. And as I mentioned, there was an easement that we are keeping between parcel B and parcel A. That water line and easement does actually extend through parcel C and runs right through our clubhouse and building B buildings. We will, we will be working with New Jersey American Water to modify the location of that easement and the water line. We show it in our proposed plan to shift, run along the drive aisle at the north end of the Thanet circle. And then reroute it between building C and B and back and connecting to its current location as it exits our site to the north. We have, I'm going to leave you all, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Bill.
Thank you.
In, the only other thing I would like to add for my direct would be that we do recognize. We have obviously the review letters from staff, but we also have filed to the Mercer County Civil Conservation District, to the county planning board. We currently have pending an application for the DEP for a letter of interpretation. Which was done by Mazer Consulting for wetlands that were established or found on the southern end of our parcel. And we also recognize that this app, this application or this project will require review from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. Following the procedures through the township.
Thank you, Mr. Sceppenitz. Just a couple of follow-up questions. I may have missed it, do we mention the porous pavement on the site?
No, with regards to the stormwater design, to go back to that, we are proposing areas of porous pavement. On parcel A, that consists of the driveways in front of each one of the townhomes. We are also going to propose porous pavement for the four individual parking spaces in that area. And we're also proposing porous pavement for the townhomes on parcel C. Their driveways will consist of the porous pavement. And that, that obviously does provide a benefit, an additional benefit for recharge. And to help in building C, in our report, we're looking at it from the standpoint of, of being able to reduce some of the impervious coverage by introducing that into the plan.
Thank you. In terms of, could you just briefly describe site lighting? And impacts or lack thereof of noise and light on adjacent properties?
Right, our, our landscape architect has a little bit more detail on that, but our design has been provided and proposed. So that we do not have any negative impact on neighboring properties. There will be no light trespass in those directions.
Thank you. That's all the direct I have from Mr. Sceppenitz at this point. Certainly welcome any questions from the board and professionals.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Please go right ahead.
One is, there seems to be a little bit of discrepancy, some, from some reports. I'm hearing there are 12 extra parking spaces. Others, I'm hearing that there are two extra parking spaces. Can you just clarify, based on the standard that's in the redevelopment plan for 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit? Exactly how many are required and how many are provided?
Yes, I can, I can certainly do that. The, the requirement is for 332 onsite. So we provide that. The correct number of spaces for the townhomes is provided. And the correct number for all the buildings on parcel C is provided, that total is 332. The additional spaces are the 12 that we show that are parallel running along Thanet. So that's, those are the excess spaces.
Understood, thanks. And the other question I had did relate to the Sprab report. I was thinking about the comment to try and have the drive aisle. That heads to the, I guess it's west from the circle. Meet the circle at a radial angle rather than sort of the way that it's doing right now, which isn't quite radial. And I was wondering, it, it seems like you could actually do that by sort of kinking the parking. Once it gets, gets past the corner of the clubhouse, could do it without too much difficulty. Have you given that consideration?
We, we really, we recognize the comment and our traffic engineer i- is here to provide some further testimony, but in, in detail to that. From my standpoint, we feel that the, the layout, I mean, given the configuration of these drives, that it will not be a, a safety concern.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear from our traffic consultant as well. It's not only a question of being radial, but also being so close to the driveway for the, the senior development. And if you, if you did what I, what Sprab suggested, you could separate them a little bit more as well as getting a radial entry into the circle.
Yes, Mr. Cohen, our, our traffic engineer, Corey Chase, will address that comment when, when he testifies.
Okay.
May I speak?
Mr. Tech Zarney, go right ahead.
Great, um, so, um, my big, bigger concern is. The vegetated, the forested area, I guess, to the south of the site. And so, you know, I guess the townhomes are going to, I guess, deforest a portion of that area. So, I mean, it would help to kind of see it before and after. But then also, I'm also concerned about the drainage basins that are going to be created. And, you know, I was, I'm looking at the site plan. And, you know, it seems like there are some major areas which would probably have to be. Clear cut essentially. I mean, what we're seeing here is something similar to like, I guess what we're, you know, what we saw at, at the. Landwin project where I guess it's the sort of, you know, detention basin in the forest. And so I'm, I'm curious to, if that can, can speak to that. Yeah, and talk about the, the forest or the trees that would need to be removed.
Well, we do show in our plan a tree removal plan. The, the fact is, the basins, they exist. So we're not putting the above ground there. There are, there's, there, I mean, there are essentially three basins in this plan, two that exist. And one, it's, if you see where my hand is, I'm, I'm, I know there might be a delay. It's showing up as a cross right now in the plan, just to the upper right hand corner of the word townhomes. That, that's one existing basin.
Okay, it exists, okay.
The other existing basin is to the upper left corner of that box where that cursor is right now. Okay, so that is the second basin. They exist, they've been there since the beginning of the office buildings, okay? Through the office buildings. So we're essentially taking those and we're reusing them. We're not, the only thing we're doing in those areas, we do not propose to touch the basin in the northeast corner. That is one, if you maybe caught it a bit earlier, there was some discussion that we've had about not touching any of the vegetation in that basin. Because we feel that it does help to provide a better water quality aspect with the vegetation in there. Instead of clearing it out, we're going to leave it as is. So that interior, that area outside of the, the basin and the area outside of the basin, particularly to the west and to the north. And even the south remains untouched. The only area that we do touch is to the east of that basin for the development of the four townhomes. Now, if I go to the upper, the second basin, that is the final point of where the discharge is located. That's where our outlet structure is located, it discharges to the stream. So we're, we are going in there and looking to modify that basin. We don't see as much vegetation in, in this one as the other basin. And we do want to modify the outlet structure to allow us to go into compliance with the current rules and regulations to choke back. The stormwater from this site before it enters the stream, which is the positive. That's the, that's the positive aspect of this development and bringing it into conformance with the current rules and regulations, where it isn't in that form today. So we do a little bit of clearing in that basin, but everything else outside of that basin doesn't get touched. Okay? And we also have.
A little more specific about the amount of clearing that you'll need to do in that basin? And, and also speak to whether that clearing is reflected in the number of trees?
We, we've, we've reflected that in our, in our demo plan. And I wanted to add one, one further thing, realize that this is the area that we do know has wetlands in it. We know is subject to our letter of interpretation. We're following the guidance of our wetlands expert and staying outside any of those wetland and anticipated buffer areas.
So do, do you know how, about how many trees you'll be removing in that basin area that's become overgrown and forested?
If I can, I can, I can get back to you on that one, let me, let me take a look.
And there's a question in that you, you mentioned it before, but there's also a question in the Q and A about whether you know. How many trees you're clearing for the towns area? That's right next to that first basin that you were describing?
Yes, again, it's in our, it, it is in our tree replacement or, or demo plan that is called out. I, I need to go back into that plan to be able to get that number.
Okay.
So I also have some other comments. So I, I'm curious, I, I mean, I, I think it's good that you guys are doing porous pavement for the townhomes. But I'm curious why you can't do it for all the parking spaces. I think that, that would help significantly in the stormwater management arena. Just a few comments on that. I, I, among with a few others on this board, have been investigating stormwater issues in town. And Harry's Brook watershed happens to be one of the, the worst watersheds in terms of flooding in, in the town. And one of the, the major sources of water into that watershed and flooding further downstream is, is this. And so I feel like, you know, it's good to meet the requirements. But I, I think that it's probably important to, to kind of go above and beyond. And so, you know, i- if there's an opportunity to do porous pavement, you know, wherever possible, I think that that's, that's probably ideal. So just wanted to make comments about that. And then I also have a final comment about the dog run. We, I did notice that it says synthetic turf there. And we actually didn't have a hearing the other week about synthetic turf. But I, I guess I'll reveal my, my feelings about synthetic turf. And I feel like it's not, you know, the best, best thing, best thing to have for the environment. I think what you're going to have also is, you know, dog waste, you know, poop essentially going into the turf. And I think that having natural turf is, is better, in my opinion, from an environmental standpoint, because we don't want more plastic. So if you could speak to that as well.
Our, our landscape architect will speak more to the dog park and give details on it.
Right, Tom Carmen will address that.
Any comments about porous pavement, using porous pavement for the other parking spaces?
We try to incorporate as much we can, recognize what my, my concern in doing it everywhere is, I don't think it's going to provide much of a benefit. And the reason why is we did some soil testing out there. We have poor permeability with the soils. So we're going to get limited benefit of doing so. And in the end, I, I think having the limited ability for water to permeate through lower levels. I think in the end ends up causing a further maintenance and deterioration problem with this porous pavement down the road. So I don't think it's going to be quite the benefit or extended benefit to do it everywhere on the site. That's why we felt, look, to at least do it in the areas and also too in lesser trafficked areas of the, we, we think of those. Driveways for the townhomes seem to be the best means of trying to be able to get it incorporated into the plan.
I, I, I mean, you know, maybe, I don't really fully understand how the, the porous pavement systems work. I, I, I mean, you know, maybe, I don't really fully understand how the porous pavement systems work. But from what I understand, I don't think it goes into the soil. I think that it would probably go through, go into some sort of drainage and it would essentially like slow down the speed of, of water going into the stormwater system. So I mean, I don't know if it's a soil issue per se, but I mean, I'm not an engineer.
What you're thinking of, so, so you know, the, we do actually have some features that do incorporate what you're talking about, which is having piping, allowing stormwater to go into an area, go into piping, get treated and then get discharged to the system. We are incorporating, and I, and I did miss this originally in my testimony, rain gardens distributed throughout the sites. We are incorporating those both in lot A and lot C, noted in the plan. But for the porous paving, no, that, that doesn't go into a series of pipes. That what happens is that you have the porous paving and then you have your subbase below and that water goes through the pavement into that and ultimately then into the soils below. So we don't have any other capture, means of capture for that water to take it away once it gets through that pavement layer.
That's good to know. For some reason, I thought it went into a pipe, like a French drain of some sports.
Right, that's the situation for the, for the rain gardens, but where we have that system in place, but it's not the same way for the, for the porous pavement.
I, I think it can be designed either way and for practical or feasibility reasons, it's not designed that way here. But Mr. Tex Zarni, I, you know, some, some porous pavement can be, can go out a low flow pipe into a, an adjoining wetland or something like that. I mean, I've, I've seen that done. But I'm not suggesting that here. I'm just saying that I think you can do it both ways. Not that I'm an engineer either.
Thanks for clarifying.
Mr. Scavens, can you, you, you mentioned the other distributed BNP's around the site, rain gardens and such. Can you just quickly point out where those are?
Right, I'll, I'll go through the, there are ones on either end of the island at building I and K. There are two in between, I, one between I and J, one between K and J. There is one just off of the bus stop. There's one at, in the island. The amenity, I guess, between building G and the entrance off of Thanet. And then I believe there's one other, I want to say it's in the area of the courtyard of building B. But so that, that's generally where they are.
Okay. Only see five people on my screen because of the sharing situation, so I can't see whether anyone else has questions. But are you finished, Mr. Tex Zarni? I'm not trying to cut you short.
No, I had one other quick thing, actually, that reminded me. Sorry to dominate the, the questioning. I promise, this will be the last one for now. So in regards to the bus stop, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like I sort of understand how, you know, there's like a nice straight line next to it. That could be a good loading area for a bus stop, but I would think that it would make more sense to put it on the other side of the cul-de-sac or circle. Because I guess the, the building right there will be senior housing, people that might need easier access to the bus stop and be, would be actually taking the bus stop. So I don't know if that was a consideration at all, but I would think that that would make a little bit more sense.
Ms. Balgawen, I'm seeing you raise your hand.
Yeah, I, I, I just had a question because that was actually one of my comments in my traffic review letter. Is that bus stop going to be for like a private shuttle for the development or is that going to be New Jersey Transit?
Heather, I'm going to swear you in if you can raise your red hand. Do you swear or fill in the testimony about the, and the half given will be the truth?
I do.
This one, please get your full name and spell your last name.
Heather Balgawen, B as in boy, A L G O W A N. And I'm the traffic consultant for the municipality.
Thanks.
Just to interject here, we do have a traffic engineer Cory Chase who probably better answer these questions. I mean, not to cut off any board members, but I just want to put that out there, that Mr. Chase could answer these questions.
Okay, what, did you, did you pose your whole question, Heather, or do you want to?
Yeah, that was it. I was, because if it is New Jersey Transit, if that, if it's their bus stop, it would really, it's going to be coordination between where they want it, more so where we want it, you know? So that, it was more, is it, is it a private shuttle to the shopping center or is it, is it going to be a New Jersey Transit in one of their?
It's not a New Jersey Transit. So we're, no, we're, we're looking at it for the freebie Princeton service.
Got it. So, yeah, so, you know, they can put it really wherever.
Can we stop screen sharing for just a moment so that I could see the rest of the board? Are there any board members who have questions? I'm not seeing any, okay. I think we should then dive into whatever we want Mr. Scoopian to address before he needs to leave. So maybe let's focus on stormwater.
Chair Jim Purcell here. I have been notified by Mr. Scoopian that he can stay as long as he needs to. Other appointment has changed, so however you would like to proceed.
Well, in that case, let's let the applicant continue with any part of their presentation they still need to get to and then we will address stormwater after that. Is that fair?
That's fine, but I think Mr. Scapinets was finished with his direct. He's a civil engineer. I don't know if we want to stay on stormwater, just get that through, or we can go onto traffic. It's up to the board.
Let's do stormwater.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to let the chair know that Mike Pizarro, who's an attendee, has his hand up. We know he's with the Watershed Institute, so I'm sure he has something related to stormwater, but he can wait until after any other discussion from the professionals.
Yeah, let's, let's do the discussion from professionals and then we will welcome comments and questions from the public, including Mr. Pizarro. Has that? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Ma'am chair, at this time I will ask Mr. Scoopian to present any of his findings and ask any questions of the applicant's engineer.
Jim, thanks, I appreciate it. Hope this room is not too bright. It's a pleasure being back in front of you all. Just to get right to the point here, this is a complicated site. It's not, it's not your typical development site. One of the reasons is we have two applicants and two sets of designers. We have existing basins on the site that were developed under the original Princeton Stormwater Ordinance. I remember reviewing them. We also, the project is located on branch two of Harry's Brook, and I think that was mentioned earlier. That this is a very flood prone or flood problem stream. And then to highlight one of Mr. Scapinets' comments is that, yeah, we do have poor soil permeability. Not unusual for Princeton, but the soil permeability is not the greatest for trying to achieve artificial infiltration as opposed to what would naturally occur on the ground. Some of the problems in my report, I, it's a, I, I believe everyone's gotten a copy. I know the applicant's engineers have and Jim has, because we've talked about it. Some of the problems are again, the coordination just between the designers. And also there are some technical, there are some data errors in both, in, in the design of this site as well as the Princeton Senior Apartment site that you'll be talking about at your next meeting. And the third one is, I think it's an opportunity as well, that the design focused only on the site as they're required to do under the ordinance. But we have an, we have a, an opportunity here to go downstream as well. Mainly because this stream is so flood problem, such a flood problem. We've got some modeling of the watershed all the way down to Brayburn Drive that I did for the engineering department in looking at Grover Avenue and also the Brayburn Drive culvert that was replaced. And the other opportunity I see here is the, the ability to upgrade at least the lower basin. It is a, it is defined, it meets the definition of a dam under the state's Safe Dam Act. It's right now a class four dam, so it does have to meet the dam safety standards for those types of dams. Although I, I, I know that from the Scrab review, they would like to preserve the upstream basin. And so far, I don't see a problem, I don't see an issue now, so far. What I've been able to review is about being able to keep that basin the way it is. We will, there is going to have to be some upgrades to the lower basin, both in terms of stormwater management and also in terms of dam safety. And I think Mr. Scapinets and I, I've had some long conversations with Jim. There are problems, they are detailed in my review, both the joint problems that are shared by both sites, this one and the Princeton Senior Apartment, as well as each individual site. But in doing some conceptual redesigning here, just looking purely from a stormwater management standpoint and not considering any other regulation, any other requirement, any other promise that may have been, excuse me, that may have been made, I think, I think the issues in my report can be overcome. There are going to be engineering issues. I think the key to solving them is to get Princeton and the two engineering firms together to agree on some of the parameters. So we have consistency between the designs and then also agreement on how to go about addressing the comments in my report. I've already talked to Mr. Scapinets, that dynamic, and they're certainly willing. And I know, I know certainly know that Jim is willing to do that. But I don't know if there's any specific questions I can answer. I'd be glad to, if I can.
Mr. Scoopian, I guess I'd just like you to, if you could conceptually explain a little bit more about what opportunities you see for mitigating downstream
And I, I'm glad you brought that up because I may have left you with the, left you with the wrong impression. The way we reviewed the site is to look at what were the, what are the flows? Where are the peak flows downstream? Well, both at the site and then downstream, both at Thanet Road and then down at Church Hume Road and then down at Brayburn Drive, to see what those, what those discharges would be today. What would be existing bait, with the existing basins, with the existing development and all the other development in that watershed. Just to give you an idea of the relative contribution, just at Thanet Road itself, which is the crossing of Harry's Brook Branch two, right at the site, we have about a hundred and forty acres of land primarily coming down from Bun Drive and the, the office buildings and the school up on Bun Drive as well as the buildings in between, Princeton Medical Center, I mean, yeah. And this site is about 10 acres. So we're looking at maybe seven, eight percent of the whole drainage area. Just a Thanet Road is comprised of this site. So while it is contributing to runoff there and downstream, it's, it's not the major contributor, but it is. The ordinance looks at onsite impacts and through the reduction factors and the way it addresses stormwater quantity, the goal here of the ordinance is to not increase runoff both at the site or downstream. From my understanding, there's not an obligation to improve things downstream, but just to make sure that as you change land use, that you don't increase runoff downstream. So what I meant by an opportunity was not so much to decrease the flows downstream, but in, in addition to just looking at the onsite runoff and applying the ordinance standards, we have an opportunity to make sure that those ordinance standards that are met onsite, right at the downstream end of the site, achieve the, the, the desired effect all the way down to Brayburn Drive. Normally, we don't have that opportunity on a site review. We're just applying the ordinance requirements for, which only apply to site runoff and what's allowed to come off of the site, with the understanding or the, the hope that the ordinance is, is, is good enough that it will maintain peak flows. Here we've gotten an opportunity to check that assumption, to check that hope, to make sure that we do not make any increase in, in runoff on downstream. So perhaps that's where I meant by an opportunity, was to make sure that when we get the onsite, when we apply the onsite requirements, they're working as we, as they're intended to work.
So
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, sorry, I, I'm going to follow up with saying, with saying what I was hoping you were talking about, which I think maybe wasn't what you were talking about. But I was hoping that you were going to say, you know, there are some opportunities to actually improve things downstream on this site. It's not a responsibility of the applicant, but that the municipality could collaborate or contribute to some improvements that could be made that would help things downstream.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point. I, I would, I would love to be able to do that. Couple limitations. One is if we want to leave the basin A alone, then we, there's, there is land out there that may be able to provide more storage and provide further reduction in flows from the site that could affect, that can help or reduce flows downstream. Although with the relative drainage area being in the, in the single digits, I'm not optimistic about that. The other thing is, a while back for the engineering department, when we were looking at Brayburn Drive and, and also at Grover Avenue, I did a, let's say a conceptual analysis of not, not making these basins bigger, but increasing the storage and decreasing the outflow from the large area upstream of Thanet Road. These two basins now, they runoff from the existing Thanet Circle site, discharge it into branch two of Harry's Brook, which goes under Thanet Road in a, in a series of culverts. And what I looked at was, can we modify those culverts under Thanet Road and perhaps increase the storage through excavation upstream of Thanet Road? That would have a greater effect on reducing downstream flows below existing. And that study really didn't show a significant decrease in flow. So the idea of a, of a, of a much larger basin on Harry's Brook Branch two, upstream of Thanet Road culverts, that not showing much of an increase, I, I don't think we're going to be able to accomplish anything better. You know, just with the onsite basin. Now, there you go, you bring up an excellent point and we're still in the review phase. And we do know, we are aware of the problems downstream. So that's, yeah, that is an opportunity that I will certainly be able to, as we review the revised designs, as we work with the site engineers, both here and the apartment site. Yeah, if there's something that can be done, and again, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not optimistic from my previous studies, but that's always a possibility. And nowadays, that's the best way to get flood protection or flood relief or reduction is to take advantage of an opportunity like this. If you're going to do something, can we do something more? So I will certainly be taking a look at that. Thank you for the, thank you for the idea.
Thank you.
And if I could just add on to that, Joe and I have had a discussion about the fact that these two projects are resulting in a modification of the outlet structure in the downstream basin. And those are some of the, that is one of the opportunities that Joe is talking about is there is an opportunity for us to look more closely at that basin, see if we can increase storage capacity. But as, as he said, the contributory flows are not going to make a huge amount of difference on the tributary to Harry's Brook, because this is such a small portion of the overall drainage area. But we can, we can try to reduce even beyond what's required in the ordinance as we work together with the applicant's engineer. Is that a good way to say it, Joe?
Sounds good to me, sir. Thank you.
Sounds good to me too.
Are, are there other questions regarding stormwater from board members? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. Cohen, can you invite Mr. Pisaro into?
Sure will. He's in. He's unmuted.
And thank you very much.
Can you?
I was working on that.
There you go. Mr. Muller, why don't you swear, and Mr. Pisaro?
If you could, Mike, if you could raise your right hand.
Certainly.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, it's Michael, last name is Pisaro, it's P.I.S.A.U.R.O. I'm the Policy Director for the Watershed Institute. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I just have a fair amount of questions, and I want to start off with, you know, thanking the applicant for, you know, incorporating green infrastructure. Thank you, you know, thank you for, you know, preserving at least that one basin's existing vegetation. And thank you to Princeton for looking at ways to improve it. With that being said, Mr. Scapinets, I just have a handful of questions regarding the stormwater management. I'll start with the, I guess the first one. You mentioned a, a series of retaining walls. And there is one that would be sort of on the southeast. I don't know if you could pull up that A eleven?
If you can do that.
So, so in that southeastern corner, and they, the retaining wall was below the new townhouses, is that correct?
There, there is a wall where my cursor is now by building G. Is that the location you're?
Okay, is it, is that where the new retaining wall is going to go?
There are, there are, there are essentially four locations for new retaining.
So I guess my, and the stormwater would be running south? Is it directly south or southeast in that location?
The water, yeah, all water is essentially heading from the top of this sheet towards the bottom of the sheet. So wa- there is a wall in the back behind building C. Building C is on the lower side of that wall. Okay, when we get to building G, building G is the upper portion of that wall.
All right, so I guess my, my basic question is, you have the tributary to Harry's Brook just south of that location.
To the east of.
To the southeast. Right. And you also have a wetlands complex there, correct? So if you are, and that retaining wall is going to stop the stormwater flow and redirect it?
No, it will not. It, the, the drainage patterns will main, will stay the same, flowing over the wall in the direction in which they're currently going today, essentially.
So did you, you've taken a look, and there should be no impacts to the health and existence of that wetland and that tributary?
No, correct.
Will it be increasing flow to that area?
No, what we are, what's interesting is, we are, we are, our proposed development footprint falls essentially within the existing office building development footprint. Okay, so water that falls on buildings G, F, and E, which are our, our most easterly extremity of development, closest to the wetlands and that stream, that water that falls on those roofs gets pulled into the stormwater system and away, much like water that falls in the parking lot in the area of, for the office building. It's underneath now the areas of G, F, and E today. That water is getting pulled away into the basins to the southern end of our site. So we're essentially maintaining pre and post.
Okay, thank you. And just to stay with this area, unnecessarily related to stormwater, but, and I can't see the lettering on the buildings, but the one on the left and the one on the far right actually extend a little bit into the transition area of the wetlands.
Yes, correct.
And between the buildings is transition area?
That's correct.
Was, is there a way to sort of, and I realize, and I do appreciate that you've kept like ninety-nine percent, and that's not a calculation, but within the existing impervious area. The, the concern, I mean, or, let me step back, are there going to be backyards to these townhouses?
The, there are, there are yards out in the back, uh, uh, you know, yes, small area in the back. But, I mean, it's not, you can see in the plan, it's not extensive.
But those backyards are either in the transition area or right up against.
Right.
And if there is a way to shift them forward a bit to provide a little more of a buffer out of those transition areas, especially when you have between the two buildings transition area, just the natural condition of people to go in there, you know, set up their, you know, lawn chairs and everything, and, you know, use that for outings. Impacts of those transition areas can, you know, be, be impactful. So, but going back to stormwater, can you sort of walk me through what the modifications to the two basins are? That you have to do, I know you have to change the orifice size.
Well, yeah, so the two existing basins, we're essentially not touching the one to the, furthest to the north. Okay. Essentially leaving that one as is second basin or the downstream basin that has the outlet structure that connects to the tributary to Harry's Brook. That one, there's vegetation in there. I, I will clarify, Ms. Chairman, the, the, no, no trees in there. So we're not removing any, any trees inside that. The, so the outlet structure will be modified in that basin, and it will be just some minor clearing.
So these basins were built twenty-plus years ago? I think you testified they were built prior to the two thousand and four rules.
They were built prior to the two thousand and four rules, yes.
Okay. And were they overbuilt when they were designed and built?
It appears that way. That's a good question. It does appear that way. We're actually taking advantage of that. Because in our, in our, obviously, i- in understanding detention basins and how they're, how they operate, in order to hold back the flow, we're choking back the flow. And our modification of the outlet structure allows us, in doing so, holding it back, allows us to do so within those basins. I see Mr. Scoopian is also raising his hand.
Yeah, the, the basins were not overdesigned. They were designed to meet the, the Princeton stormwater ordinance that was in effect at the time. It was a somewhat simpler ordinance. It's, it's great to see that it worked so well, as Brett pointed out. It's great to see that the, that they do, they do work for these range of storms that we look at now. But from my recollection, that the basins were designed to meet the ordinance at that time. Thanks.
So those were basically flood control at that time?
Oh my, now you are stretching my mind.
Never mind.
Princeton not only had, Princeton not only had the first stormwater quantity controlled ordinance that I'm aware of, municipal ordinance, back in nineteen seventy-four, it added the water, it, the first water quality requirement in the early eighties. Now, I'm trying to remember exactly when these were built, and it's to whether it was designed for the water quality standards at that time. And I, I could find out for you.
Mr. Scapinets, did you take a look at the plans for those basins?
No, did not.
Okay, so I, in, did you do any soil testing in those basins?
No, we, we do, what we did was, we surveyed those basins, obviously, to get their volume and, and understanding of their, their overall volume.
So I, I guess my, my question, my concern is, you know, they're twenty, thirty years old. They're detention basins, so they will have silted out, collected silt. Those elevations will have changed over time. And I guess, I guess my concern and my question is, how did you determine that they can handle the, the quantity requirements from today without actually, you know, excavating and regrading them, understanding that over time, those basins will fill up and have filled up?
Because based on the survey information that we have, we were able to survey the bottom of those basins. And, and based on that survey and topographic information, understand the volumes, which was of those basins, which was used in the reports that, for both projects.
Thank you. And then regarding the new townhomes for on Thanet, is the manufactured treatment device before the detention, underground detention basin or post?
Before.
Okay, and so the existing basins are going to take the stormwater from not only your site, but the Pearl Site and the new Town Homes and Lot A?
Correct.
And the, for the underground detention basin, is that designed so that it releases after the storm and the flow from the existing site? Or are they all hitting that site at the same time?
Well, the existing site right now is, does not have a, we do not have a stormwater detention basin on C. So that water is running in and will theoretically get to the basins or downstream of A faster than what's being detained in A.
Okay, all right. I think that was all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman.
Mr. Cohen, are there other members of the public that have questions related to stormwater? Well, I guess, I guess what, hmm. I'm sorry. You were saying?
I, I was just starting to say, we have a couple of comments in Q and A. And I don't know how you want to deal with that. I know that we've talked about having members of the public testify in person. But a couple of, of these folks have expressed preference to have their comments read. Mr. Muller, do you want to offer a?
And let's stop sharing the screen for right now.
They should testify.
Okay, so with that instruction, Kip Cherry has her hand up. I'm going to promote Kip to panelist.
Okay, good.
There she is.
Okay, hi, I'm Kip Cherry, and.
If you could raise your right hand?
Yes, please.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Kathleen P. Cherry. I've been concerned about the flooding in Harry's Brook for a long time. So anything that affects Harry's Brook, I think, is very important to try to control the water before it ends up way down in Harry's Brook and floods people out. And in fact, the town had to buy up a house, I believe, on Harry's Brook because it was flooded so often. So that's a big problem. And also, wetlands are, are a thing to, are, are vegetation to be preserved. And so I'm always concerned if we're losing wetlands or not taking care of them. So the wetlands are a, an opportunity for stormwater management naturally. And I noticed in the various reports, very little comment about the ecology of the wetlands and anything about any animals or, or the kinds of plants that are, that are there or anything like that. Or anything about whether they could be expanded to hold on to water longer. So I just wanted to add that in, that I think that the issue is more than just holding water from this development on the property. It's affecting what happens downstream in Harry's Brook from, from the development.
Just a, a quick point clarification. Are we just taking questions at this point of Mr. Scapinets' testimony? I thought we're going to leave us to the end.
Should I have asked a question?
If you have any, Ms. Cherry.
Well, I'll just say that my comment is a question in terms of how are we handling the, those issues? In, in terms of the detention basins, the rain gardens and all the rest of it? Are, are we able to do something that will help to control water coming down those two tributaries and ending up down in Harry's Brook?
Well, and that's exactly the point that Mr. Cohen raised.
Yes, it is, I'm just being a citizen and seconding the motion.
Mr. Scapinets, did I, did I hear you testify earlier that, or I thought, I thought I did, that the, that there would be a reduction in runoff from this site as a, a result of the stormwater management features that maybe are the ones that go above and beyond what's in the basin, the paved, permeable pavement and the rain gardens and that kind of thing? Is that, is that correct, or did I misunderstand?
What we're looking at is a reduction in runoff rate, that's the key.
Off rate, okay.
There's two things, there's volume as, and rate. We are, there is an increase in impervious coverage, so there is more volume, but that controlled rate is what we're looking to achieve and what the rules, you know, want us to do. So, and we're achieving that.
Right, which is specifically to, to try to address flooding.
Correct.
Okay, I, I had wanted to, you know, take, take questions and comments from the public about stormwater so that Mr. Scoopian could leave when he wanted, but I, or when he needed to. I understand he doesn't need to leave now. I'd rather not go sort of back and forth. I'd rather get a, a bunch of, you know, address the, a lot of concerns that were raised in advisory board and committee memos, and then come back to comments from the public. Does that sound right?
But are we asking questions of Mr. Scapinets regarding civil engineering, including stormwater at this point, and then moving on to traffic with comments at the end? That's how the applicant would prefer.
Yeah, yeah. So if there are other, other questions for Mr. Scapinets related to his testimony and all the things he went over, let's ask those now. I don't see any questions from board members, and Mr. Cohen, is anybody?
No, and I, I think it is a good point to instruct the public that public comment will be at the end of the entire presentation.
Right.
Only questions for the professionals are appropriate at this time. So we don't have any hands up right now, but I wanted to make that message a little more clear.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. If we're completed now with, with public questions, I could certainly complete the testimony of Mr. Scapinets and bring on our traffic engineer.
Good.
Corey Chase, if, if that's the board's pleasure.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, I have Mr. Corey Chase of Dynamic Traffic. Mr. Chase was previously sworn, but he was not qualified. And Mr. Chase, if you could just briefly for the board, describe your education, experience, and license her to be qualified.
Sure, again, Corey Chase, I'm a principal with the firm Dynamic Traffic, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. For other states, bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts. I've been qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over ninety-five municipalities throughout the state, including Princeton on the PNC Bank application in the nearby Princeton Shopping Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I ask that the board accept Mr. Chase's qualifications as an expert in traffic engineering?
We accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Chase, were you going to refer to the exhibit package as well?
I was, yes, I'm going to share my screen if it's so acceptable to the board. And I'll be referring to the same exhibit that Mr. Scapinets referred to, which was applicant's A eleven. And I'll be referring to the same exhibit that Mr. Scapinett's referred to, which was applicant's A11. As part of our role in the application, we prepared a traffic impact study, which was previously submitted to the board dated August 14, 2020. That assesses the traffic and circulation impacts of the proposed multifamily residential development on the surrounding roadway network. We also, as Mr. Scapinett's mentioned, this will be a redevelopment of a former office building site. So we took the opportunity to prepare trip generation projections utilizing data published by the Institute of Transport Engineers, which is the national and state recognized standard for developing traffic projections. To compare what the traffic would have been from that former office building when it was previously occupied to the traffic generated by the proposed multifamily residential development. That trip generation comparison is summarized on page seven of our report in table five. We focused on the the three standard peak hours, the weekday morning, the weekday evening and the Saturday midday peak hours. And it's important to note that if you compare the trip generation from the former office development to the trip generation of the proposed multifamily development, you would actually see a reduction in traffic generated as a result of the redevelopment of the site when compared to the former office use during the critical weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours. So it would be a net reduction in traffic on the adjacent roadway network. But to prepare a conservative analysis, we didn't take any credit for that former development. We assumed that this would was vacant land and that all traffic generated by our development was new to the adjacent roadway network. Just to prepare a conservative assessment. We did traffic counts at the intersections of Fanet Road with Terhune Road, as well as the intersection of to the west of the subject property of Terhune Road and North Harrison Street. We did a pre and post development analysis. The results of that analysis is summarized in table seven of our report located on page eight. And that shows that at the adjacent signalized intersection, the overall intersection is going to continue to operate at acceptable level of service C before and after the proposed development. So there's no degradation in level of service at the adjacent signalized intersection of North Harrison Street and Terhune Road with the additional traffic generated by the proposed development. Again, not taking any credit for the traffic that would have been generated by the former office development. We also did a level of service analysis at the Fanet Road intersection with Terhune Road and found that that intersection is going to operate at acceptable level of service B or better during each of the study peak hours. As Mr. Scapinett's mentioned, we do provide 332 parking spaces onsite, which complies with the redevelopment plan. Did review the overall site access and circulation with Mr. Scapinett's through the development of the proposed site plans and again, find that it to be acceptable as far as access and circulation will provide adequate access to all areas of the site. As a board member brought up earlier, there was some question regarding the the access to the multifamily residential project and the proximity to the access to the adjacent Pearl Development, which will be presented as part of a future application. We did take the opportunity as part of our traffic analysis to include the traffic generated by the Pearl Development in our report. It's a comprehensive report assessing the impacts of both developments comprehensively. The Pearl Development, again, it's going to be age restricted multifamily development. It generates a very low volume of traffic. It's approximately one trip every three minutes during the peak hour. So the activity and the potential for conflicts at these driveways is going to be very low. Again, circulation around Thanat Circle is in a counterclockwise format. So you're talking about only right turn in movements to the driveways and right turn out movements where traffic in the circle has them right away. So we feel that the the location and the proximity to the driveways, they'll still operate in a safe and efficient manner. That's all I had for direct Mr. Flannery. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has, that Ms. Balgawen has or Mr. Purcell has as well.
Certainly, we could proceed with with questions from the board members, if that's the pleasure of of the board.
Sure. Are there, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I thought I saw in the in our traffic consultant's report suggestion that you should look at the other nearby developments that are also slated for construction in the next couple of years. I don't know if you had a chance to to do that or how you feel about that. But as you may know, there are a couple of other developments that are part of our affordable housing plan that are across Terhune from this project and will be contributing additional traffic. And I I'd be curious if you thought even with that additional load that the level of service at the light at Terhune and Harrison would remain acceptable or would remain a C level of service.
That's a good question. As I mentioned, we did take into account the traffic generated by the Pearl Development. We are aware that there is potential plan for additional development across the street along Terhune. It's my understanding, nothing's formally proposed at this time. But we did include a growth rate, and I should have mentioned this as part of my direct testimony. We do factor up the existing traffic counts to assume a certain amount of background growth. And that growth rate utilized in our report would account for any traffic that would be generated by those residential developments. And again, given the levels of service, they were very low levels of C. So there is room for additional delay that could be added at the intersection. It would still operate at acceptable level of service C. So I don't see any potential for degradation with additional traffic that would potentially be generated by those developments.
Okay. And one other question that I had. So the the parallel parking along Fanet Road, which I know has been sort of or was recommended to be removed in the SPRAB report. I was actually the one who suggested I thought that would be a good idea, but it was the notion that you could use the existing roadway to you know, as your access drive or as your as your drive aisle. An efficient way to get some of your required parking. If I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like those are bonus spaces. They're not part of the required 332 parking spaces. In which case I don't I don't know. I I guess I'm I'm asking a question is can we just provide the 332 spaces and get rid of a little bit of somewhere? Even if we were to keep these, you know, I I'd rather not have extra parking spaces on the on the site overall.
You are correct in that we do not account for the 12 parallel spaces along Thanat in our overall total. Those spaces are all provided onsite. So you're those were going to be available for utilization by the public.
Okay, so that being said, I think I would support the SPRAB recommendation to eliminate them to improve road users in particular for bicyclists.
Yes, I I think I agree with that. Can we stop sharing the screen again for a moment so that I can see?
Sure.
The rest of the board. Oh, lots of hands raised. Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. Mr. Chase, I was wondering if any thought was given to school pickup, school bus pickup and drop off. Where will that be located? And what will the impact on other traffic coming in and out of the development during morning hours, for instance, or you know, less or so during the afternoon as that is occurring?
If I may share my screen again, Madam Chair, just to point to the bus stop. As was noted by Mr. Scapinett's, we are providing a bus stop as you enter Thanat Circle. As you're approaching from Terhune Road, it's anticipated this would be the location for the school bus stop as well. Well, that would have to be confirmed with the Board of Education, but that's our anticipated location for school bus stop. So again, and this was brought up as a question earlier. It was our recommendation to locate the bus stop as you enter the circle along the tangent point in the roadway. That provides the most clear visibility for vehicles approaching along Thanat Road. It also allows for vehicles to bypass the bus through sufficient width in the circle to allow vehicles to bypass a stop bus and continue around the circle. The problem with locating the bus stop on a point where the circle is not at a tangent, it's very hard for the bus to maneuver itself parallel to the bus stop and will usually end up blocking the entire road.
Okay, so you're we're looking at one bus location for, you know, 221 units, many of which I assume will have possibly have children all gathering into one spot. Is that correct?
It's my understanding again to be confirmed with the Board of Education. Typically, you know, as far as school bus pickups go, they don't like to circulate the entire site with multiple stops. They tend like to concentrate that stop at a single location.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quinn, did you have a question as well?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add my voice to Council President Cohen's regarding the parallel parking. As as anyone who's ever ridden a bike knows that the chance of being doored is is very real and assuming that these cars park going down the drive and circling around and parking driver's side facing Terhune, that's a that's going to be a real problem for bike circulation. So I I'm with Mr. Cohen and with SPRAB on that.
Are there other? I I can again see only five people right now. Are there? Are there other questions? Is this the right time to talk about overall circulation and or maybe a segue to talk about that? I'm not sure whether that is something that might have been raised earlier with Mr. Scapinett's or or who was the right person on behalf of the applicant to address that. But there were a lot of recommendations related to sidewalks and bike and pedestrian circulation. And I'd like to maybe understand how the applicant views internal circulation, you know, crosswalks, all of that stuff while we're talking about cars. Chair, does that make sense? Yes.
Chair Wilson, I just wanted to add an idea, sort of adding to Council President Cohen's idea about getting rid of the surplus parking. If there was a way to make sure that bicycles could be accommodated safely along Fanet Road, maybe another place where it'd be nice to remove some parking spaces would be immediately west of the clubhouse where you have that westerly exit onto the circle from the parking area. Because if you took away some of the parking spaces that are closest to the circle, you'd have more room to redesign how that aisle comes into the, you know, comes into the circle and maybe pull it a little bit away from the drive into the senior site. Just a thought.
Who would address that on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Flannery?
Well, Mr. Mr. Chase certainly talked about vehicular traffic, but Mr. Carmen, Tom Carmen, is probably better suited to address, you know, other internal circulation issues. You know, bicycle landscaping, that sort of thing.
Okay, then can we pose that question to him then?
Certainly, Mr. Chase, if you wanted to just briefly touch on vehicular circulation on the site and parking.
Certainly. Again, as I noted in my testimony, we reviewed the onsite circulation with Mr. Scapinett's and the entire design team as part of the development of the site plans. We also had the opportunity to work with Pearl's engineer in developing the cross access between the two developments. And it it's my professional opinion that the site plan as design provides safe and efficient access to all areas of the site.
But but you're you're talking about cars.
That's correct. Mr. Carmen will be presenting his full testimony forthcoming. And at that time, he's going to talk about the recommendations from the SPRAB as far as sidewalk locations, crossings, bicycle parking, things of that nature.
Okay, great.
Exactly right.
Mr. Purcell?
Chair, I just would like to take this opportunity as we're talking about motor vehicle traffic to ask whether or not our expert Heather Balgawen has any questions or comments to address to the applicant.
So I know it was said that the applicant prepared a response comment letter. I'm not, I didn't see it. But Corey, do you want to to go through my comments? Or if you're okay with with all of them or anything, you know, maybe the more important ones, you know, I'd recommended a traffic calming measure somewhere along Fanet, you know, because it is quite a bit of a distance from when you enter the development and you can zoom on down to the circle. So even, you know, would the applicant be okay with a raised pedestrian crossing or a textured pedestrian crossing just to, you know, maybe slow traffic down a little bit and make it safer for pedestrians? So it's not one straight shot down the that corridor there.
And that's a good question, Heather. As we did provide a response, and I'd be happy to circulate that to you and review that with you in detail. It was our thought that the existing horizontal curvature in that would act in and of itself as a traffic calming measure as you approach the site from Terhune. The road does bend to the right and then bend back again to the left. So there is that presence of horizontal curvature, which will help slow vehicles down. There are several raised crosswalks onsite, which Mr. Carmen will go over in more detail as we get into the the overall internal site circulation. It wasn't our intention to, I I tend to discourage speed bumps and things of that nature, just because of the maintenance hazards that go along with it. The things like that. But, you know, we really felt that just based on the horizontal curvature of the road, that it would help limit the potential for speeds and things of that nature.
Is the is that is the crossing adjacent to the bus stop-ish? Was that going to be textured or raised or is that just simply painted?
I would defer to Mr. Carmen on that. I'm not, I apologize. I'm not 100% sure if it's going to be textured or not.
And then my other, really, this is more of a comment and just to let the board be aware that the municipality, they have conducted their own traffic analysis. It's not public yet. It's still in the works. It's internal. However, they conducted a analysis along Terhune and and did encompass every single development that's going to be going in, including Pearl, this one, Barski Comfort, you know, the the shopping center, the redevelopment there. And they had come up with improvements. They'd identified improvements, both pedestrian related and vehicular related. More concentrated on the intersection of Terhune and Fanet Road. So we just wanted to make the board aware that it's in the works, but also the applicant make sure that they coordinate with the municipality at the appropriate time to determine their potential fair share contribution to these improvements. So I just wanted to get that on record and make sure, you know, if everyone's aware that there is a a very detailed, comprehensive, comprehensive analysis in the works right now with the municipality.
Thank you. That's that's great to know.
Yeah.
And would you mind just for for us laypeople on the board, explaining the level of service system and, you know, because it's counterintuitive that you add hundreds of dwellings and the level of service doesn't change. We all know that the number of cars overall will increase, but that doesn't mean the level of service will change necessarily. So could you just explain that?
Yeah, would you want me to or or Mr. Chase?
Um, I I was hoping you would, Heather, since you're.
So.
Since you're on our side.
So level of service, you know, it, the levels are A, B, C, D, E and F. And when we say it doesn't change, it doesn't, it means it doesn't change levels. It doesn't mean it doesn't get worse, meaning the the delay in seconds, the average length seconds per vehicle. So I don't have the the actual report up right now, but I can I can pretty much say the level of service probably did degrade in seconds. did degrade in seconds, but it didn't degrade enough for it to go from a C to a D or a D to an E. So it did get worse, but not significantly. However, the analysis that the municipality is working on and and our office is working on, when we did encompass all of the developments, including Avalon, including Pearl, there was obviously significant degradation when you include, you know, all of the developments. So that's why we're coming up with improvements that all of the developments together will have their fair share to have to contribute to. So, you know, I know it's it's kind of silly to say, oh, everything's going to be fine. The level of service didn't change. It just means it didn't drop in the letter grade, but it did, the 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 delay in seconds did increase, just not in an insignificant amount.
Right. And can you explain level of C in terms of the the range of wait time that level C represents?
Sure. Hold on, I don't have that.
I can do that, Heather.
Yeah, go ahead if you have that.
Thanks, Corey.
Could I just, I just want to mention one thing to Ms. Belgawen with her report that there are still some aspects of her report related to some of the things she mentioned that are confidential according to the settlement that the that the municipality is involved with. So I would just ask her to be careful about what she is.
I just want to briefly comment on the pro-rata share issue. As the board may be aware, the applicant is the designated redeveloper of the site and entered into a redevelopment agreement with Princeton regarding the development of that site. And as part of that agreement, there are significant contributions in the way of a redevelopment fee as well as various improvements which address many of these these issues that Ms. Belgawen had mentioned. So it's the applicant's position that we shouldn't be required to pay any pro-rata share because it's already been taken care of in the redevelopment agreement.
Uh, that's noted and that's sort of beyond the purview of this board. So Mr. Chase, did you want to? You didn't already talk about level of C, did you?
So Heather was right, there there's level, there's second ranges associated with each level of service and they increase as you go up. So level of service C is an average vehicle delay of between 20 and 35 seconds. Level C, level of service C is certainly acceptable in certain parts of the state, level of service is acceptable. But obviously, C in this situation is more than an acceptable operational condition.
Mr. Oakman?
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to to add on to that because and Heather, I'm 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 sorry if I missed you say this when when you were you going through the list of of projects, but it struck me when during the presentation when they were, they were saying that the the project across the street, which as I understand it, I don't know exactly what's planned currently, but it's been talked about for a pretty large number of units there adjacent to the, you know, to the shopping center. It's it struck me that 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 it seems odd that that would be dealt with just by an underlying growth rate. Because that's, you know, you're talking about a residential street that would suddenly have, you know, 50, 60 additional units on there. So I was just wondering if that is, if that's one of the projects that you're talking about that would have a pro-rata share of of necessary improvements.
I could address that, Madam Chair. And and I want to go back to Councilwoman Sachs' comment. Yes, some of this information is currently in negotiation, so it really should not, we should not be very specific about it. I'll just say that the applicant could not have been aware of the numbers of units. And I I'm just going to say that in order to do a proper traffic study, that they would only be able to use growth rates that are typical. Without knowing the specific number of units that are going into all of these developments, it's it's pretty much impossible for them to determine what sort of impact all of it would have. They can really only take into consideration their own impact. And the fact that they've added growth rates for the for the region is is an acceptable method without without them knowing any other specific information.
Right, but respectfully to to the process, I mean, you know, I, again, I don't think, I I mean, it it certainly may still be confidential what's happening on that site, but I don't think anybody believes that it's going to be, you know, five residential homes, you know, just like
Right.
On that, on that street. And I think the, you know, the issue is that I would think an underlying growth rate would really be based on what's there, a growth rate based on what's there before.
I, Mr. Oakman, I just wanted to, I was just trying to clarify that. That is why our department, the engineering department, is working on a comprehensive traffic study with more specific information and determining what improvements need to be made to Turhune and to Turhune and the Harrison intersection in particular. Because that's the intersection that's going to see most of this impact. And we are discussing opportunities to make the improvements as we move forward. But as Mr. Flannery said, with the redevelopment agreement, there's little opportunity for us to require them to contribute to some of these future improvements that are going to be made. Does that help?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, it's it's a helpful explanation and it lays the concerns, but but it is, it is, it is appreciated. Thanks.
Comment that, you know, in terms of the volume of traffic, and somebody who's more of an expert than me, correct me if I'm wrong, but the counts that we were seeing in the peak hour that were coming from 220 units on Fanet were in the range of about 100 trips per hour, which is about, it's less than two cars a minute. If that light cycles at Turhune and Harrison, and it's right by my house and I go through that light all the time, but, you know, it it cycles every 30 seconds or so. I've never seen people have to wait more than one cycle of the light to get through. And I don't think that an additional two cars or four cars is going to change that. So if it's two cars per hour from this development and two cars from the ones across the street, per minute, you mean? Should still be okay. I think that's the order of magnitude of the impact that we're talking about based on the reports that I read.
You're correct, Mr. Cohen.
Other questions for Mr. Chase or Ms. Belgawen related to traffic? Or, yes, the traffic reports? Okay, well, seeing none, I think it's, the time is right to take a break. My clock says it's 8:51. Let's, let's take a break and reconvene at nine o'clock absolutely sharp. I'll ask for a, you know, a redo of the roll call so that when we reconvene, you know, we know we're all here for the tape. And so go do some jumping jacks or run up and down the driveway or something and come back fresh.
And and Madam Chair, just very quickly, when we return, we'll put on our architect. I understand, I just want to confirm that Mr. Chase's testimony is complete at this point. We've closed the public comment, I mean, public questioning, rather.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see you in eight minutes. Thank you, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sachs?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Party.
There's always one.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
And Ms. Wilson?
Here. Okay. We are moving on then to Mr. Carmen's testimony. Is that correct?
Actually, the Mr. Bradford's testimony.
Oh, okay.
Bradford, the architect.
Oh, of course. I apologize. I didn't write it down, so I didn't remember.
No worries, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tex Arney is back with us.
Great, thank you, Carrie.
I'm back, by the way. Sorry. I don't know if we did the role.
We got you. Thanks, Zena. Are we moving? Mr. Bradford, are you going to share your screen or something or?
If I could just very briefly qualify Mr. Bradford, he was previously sworn. Thank you. Mr. Bradford, just very briefly for the board, describe your education, experience, and licensure.
Yes, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Edward Bradford, I'm an architect with TAT in Chelsea, Mass. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey and Massachusetts. Received a master's in architecture degree from the State University of New York in 1991. I've been practicing since, have designed thousands of units and communities of this type. And and I have been qualified by numerous boards in New Jersey.
I asked that the board accept Mr. Bradford's qualifications as an expert in architecture?
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bradford, if you could just very briefly, I assume you're going to share your screen to go through the exhibit package?
Yes. Yes, thank you. I I have a series of exhibits to run through describing the architectural design, actually nine in total. This first exhibit is titled or marked A2 and it's titled Site Plan Comparisons. And Mr. Scapinets did a did a very good job of describing the site plan layout and principles thereof, so I won't, I won't cover that, but I do want to point out in this exhibit that shows on the left the redevelopment plan concept that's included in the redevelopment plan and compare that with our current proposal that's on the right to clarify or to highlight a couple revisions or changes that have made since the concept plan that were made at the recommendation of the planning board, in fact. So a key feature of this site plan consistent with redevelopment plan is that we're proposing varying building footprints, massing, and heights to create a strong neighborhood character in in a human scale. So one of the adjustments, if you look to the left here, and I hope folks can see my cursor, a key change that we did make at the direction of of your, of your board and in your recommendation letter, that's part of the redevelopment plan, was an adjustment primarily of the elevator building or the four-story building that's at the center of the site. So you can see in the redevelopment plan concept, a more linear building, kind of longer wings, if you will. And we think an important adjustment that we made at your recommendation is shown on the right here in the current site plan. And that's a building in the center that has a, if you will, a more radial plan configuration. So now we have shorter wings that radiate from the center of of the building where we have the elevator cores, kind of limiting the length of the exterior walls, improving the architecture in the scale, in effect, making the board building more functional because it shortens the length of runs for residents from the elevator. A second change that I wanted to highlight that was made at the board's recommendation really does, again, revolve around the center of the site here. And and a key feature of our of our concept from the beginning, but we think we've improved on that with your recommendation, is to minimize the the expanses of paving. I think it was noted that and again, related to the elevator building, a larger expansive paving at this location. So with the change in the building configuration, what we're able to accomplish is, again, parking lots that in no case are kind of double-loaded, if you will, as we had in the concept. So we think these are important adjustments that that break up the parking areas. Move on to Exhibit A3, which is titled Master Plan and Building Types. And again, Mr. Scapinets did a good job, again, of describing the site plan concept. So I'll just describe some of the features or program elements of the buildings themselves. So as was noted, there's 221 units configured in 11 residential buildings. The townhomes, four buildings located along Fanet and then three more in the northeast corner of the site are two and three stories and include a mix of two and three bedroom units. And each of the units has a private front entry, private garage, and very generous outdoor decks as well. Second building program element I'd note are the stacked flat buildings shown here in the light blue color. The buildings are three stories. They include 63 units and a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. And some of the top floor units have lofts as well. These units are accessed from a common stair and and a common corridor. Again, at the center of the site, as I noted on the last exhibit, is the elevator building that's shown in this light orange color. It is a four-story building, 130 units. It has a mix of studios, ones, two, and three-bedroom flats. Like the stacked flat building, some of the fourth floor units do have lofts as well. 10 of the 11 affordable units proposed are located within this building we identify as Building B, including five dedicated for special needs housing. The units in this building are accessed by two elevator cores and a common corridor. And a couple other features I'd note is this building does include a very large bike storage room located in this vicinity, access from the outdoors, as well as an interior trash and recycling facilities that are located just about here, so interior to the building. Another key building program element in the site plan is the clubhouse. It's really the focal point for the community. It's it's shown here in this brown color. It's one story and includes a leasing office, resident lounge, work-from-home spaces, a fitness center, and a model unit. And then finally, the maintenance building, that is a one-story building, and it includes a workshop, storage, trash and recycling facilities, but those are only for the adjacent stacked flat buildings. As I noted, the elevator building has its own interior trash room. Move on to Exhibit A4, which is a is a site section. And again, a very important feature of this design is to make sure and of the redevelopment plan is to make sure that the design fits the context in the broader neighborhood very well. And we think that's that we've, that is what we've accomplished here. And hopefully this site section can help demonstrate that. So there's a key plan up here in the right-hand corner that shows the line of section that that we show here. So we're kind of working across and lengthwise across the site. So working from left to right, this section cuts across the three-story stacked flat building through the roadway and then through the one-story clubhouse. You can see the four-story building behind. We cut through the pool courtyard here that's shaped by the clubhouse and this four-story wing of the elevator building through a more passive courtyard that's framed by the building and then a three-story townhome unit that you can see in plan at this location. And then importantly, because of the position of the site, we've retained this large wooded buffer. between the townhome and the existing neighbors on Governor's Lane. So, again, the idea here is to really have very minimal visual impact to the neighboring homes due to the stepping of the building, so we've located the taller buildings towards the center of the site, four stories and three stories. If they're at the perimeter, they're located near taller existing office buildings. And then stepping down to buildings that are of a scale similar and compatible to the neighbors. One final thing I'd point out in this section where it's easy to show, there's about 190-foot separation between this townhome and the neighbors on Governor's Lane. As well as I noted, the wooded buffer, and then Mr. Carmen may elaborate on, there is some existing or some proposed evergreen plantings in addition to that existing wooded buffer. So, again, we think very minimal impacts for the neighbors. Next, I have a series of renderings that I can go through to show in more detail the proposed architectural design. The first of these is Exhibit A5. And it's titled Townhomes, I'm just going to work through for you with renderings each of the building types that are being proposed. So, again, this first is, this first group is, shows the townhomes. So, we have three views in this case, two renderings on the bottom row, views two and three are showing the proposed townhomes along the net. So, in this view too, you can see the entry drive, townhome on the left, the clubhouse kind of terminates your vista as you approach. And then the four-story building just beyond. The view in the upper left-hand corner shows the townhomes that are over in the northeast corner. So, while the townhomes on the net have their garages in the rear, which creates, you know, a really active streetscape that activates and creates, we think, a really great street, walkable pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that, again, is a key feature of the design. Garages at this group in the northeast corner are accessed from the front. In addition, I'd point out that another goal here is really to create a kind of neighborhood scale, it's a critical element of the design, so I think you can get a sense of that. That we're going to distinguish between buildings with color variations as well, so, again, try to create a neighborhood residential scale. Very important element. Move on to Exhibit A6, which is titled Mid-Rise Building. So, this is the four-story elevator building, as we call it, and towards the center of the site. View two in the lower left-hand corner shows the building wings of the elevator building, as well as the clubhouse, kind of shaping this pool courtyard. View three in the lower right-hand corner here shows opposite, a more passive courtyard, but again, shaped by, informed by the wings of the building itself. And then View one in the upper left-hand corner shows a view of the end of one of the building wings. But I think shown best in View three here, the elevations of the elevator building are really organized with vertical bay elements that you can see here. There's this kind of important, in the aesthetic, this wood accent panel, as well as these recessed balconies that create some depth and shadow. So, those vertical elements are kind of woven with these horizontal elements, all to create some kind of visual interest. And then at the ends, we have these, what we kind of call bookends, if you will, clad in stone with strong gables that are intended to break up the roof and, again, provide a more friendly residential scale. I'll move on to Exhibit A7, which is titled Stacked Flat Buildings. So, again, you can see in the key plan, these are the three-story buildings located at this portion of the site. The buildings do have, again, with the idea of wanting to activate and create a friendly pedestrian environment, we do locate entries and lobbies and ground floor patios along that ground floor to create that pedestrian realm. A key element in the design of the stacked flat buildings are these vertical bays, again clad with that wood accent panel, a little bit different way than the elevator building. But these bays are designed to kind of step above the main cornice line to kind of break up the scale of the building. And the final building that I have to show you is shown here in Exhibit A8. And it's titled Clubhouse. So, again, the clubhouse is centrally located, it's really the primary recreational amenity, and it's, as I said, the heart of the, of the community. View one in the upper left-hand corner shows a kind of bird's eye view, if you will, of the clubhouse with a bend in it to kind of shape this pool courtyard. I would say a key element or elements of this building are porches, so I think you can see in View two here, we're proposing a porch that is a key feature towards the poolside of the clubhouse, kind of having spaces on the inside that make strong connections to the outside and the two working together are important, so this porch provides a kind of transitional element, a place where one can be out of the, out of the cover of the weather and enjoy the courtyard. And then on the front, a similar porch that you can see in View three here, that's also an important element, kind of a focal point as you approach onto that circle, mark the entry to the building. So, those are, those are two elements we think are key to the design of the clubhouse. The next exhibit is A9, and it's titled Preliminary Material Palette. So, we do propose, as I think you could see in the renderings, a pretty diverse palette of materials. There's an emphasis with the selection of the materials, of picking materials that really require little maintenance. That's a pretty important criteria for the materials. This exhibit, as you can tell, does show the four-story elevator building, but we are proposing similar materials to this in different colors and combinations on the other building types. In this particular case, in this particular building, we're proposing a stone veneer. The stone veneer clads the entire ground floor of this building, and then you can see it rises up into these bookends, if you will, right up to the top of the fourth story. And then the, there's a cement board clad gable that tops off that, that cladding. We're proposing a lap siding, horizontal siding, give that kind of residential texture at the second, third and fourth floors. And then again, as I noted in the, in one of the renderings, we're bringing in these vertical bay windows that are really a great element for the, for the units, clad in the gray cement board and that wood accent panel that I mentioned. And finally, my, my last exhibit is A10. And it's titled Bedroom Sizes Per Zoning Section 10B-279. And per that zoning section, bedrooms within dwelling units are required to have a minimum floor area. The zoning section outlines that a first bedroom should be 150 square feet, second bedroom 100 square feet, and each additional bedroom at least 80 square feet. Our design does include some one-bedroom units, and one is shown in this example where the bedroom floor area itself is less than 150 square feet. But when we include the closets, the bedroom does comply with that section. So, you can see in this exhibit, in the darker orange color is the bedroom floor area. This is one example, there are other one-bedrooms. But in this case, the bedroom floor area is 143 square feet. When you add the walk-in closet, you get an additional 100, sorry, you get additional 27 square feet. So, that's a total of 170 square feet, so the instances where we have these cases, when you add the bedroom floor area and the closet floor area, we do exceed the requirement of 150 square feet, so it's, it's our belief that a variance isn't required. But Mr. Scapinets will elaborate this on his planning testimony. And then finally, I just want to point out, excuse me, another item covered in the engineering report, where it was noted that a variance would be required per section 10B-278 if the net floor area of the dwelling units is not complied with. That is a section that we will comply with, so a variance will not be required. And that is the end of my testimony, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, just one really quick redirect, just to clarify, if the board determines that closets are included within the bedroom floor area, we would not need that variance from 10B-279, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all the direct question I have from Mr. Bradford.
Thank you. Are there any, maybe we can just continue the shared screen view?
Yes.
Are there questions for Mr. Bradford? Mr. Cohen?
I wanted to ask Mr. Bridger how he feels about the notion of including the closet in the calculation of the bedroom area.
I'm comfortable with that conclusion. For the purposes of calculating sewer operating fees on, on structures, we, we do identify bedrooms as having a closet, so it's consistent with other practices in the town, so.
Derek, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony about that you have given and will give with you?
Yes, sir, I do.
So sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bradford, can you speak to the issue of the size of the individual units and any discrep, not discrepancy, but differences that might exist between the market rate and the affordable units? I think that was raised in, in somebody's
P E C.
In one of the memos, and I think you're probably the right person to address that.
There is a mix of sizes for both the market and affordable units, so there's, there's a variation in a distribution really across the board.
Are the one-bedroom market rate units the same size as the one-bedroom affordable units and so on and so on for two-bedroom and three-bedroom?
No, the size do, the sizes do vary, the finishes are similar for the market and the affordable units. But again, there's a variation, when we do distribute the affordable and market units evenly, there's, they're consistently distributed across the floor plans. There are variations in sizes, there are many types of both market and affordable units incorporated in the, in the design.
Okay. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bradford, you mentioned the affordable units and I'm just trying to clarify something that you just said. So, will the, but will the affordable units be interspersed with the market units? Or will they be sort of in a separate wing? And I'm assuming, and so you address that all but one of the affordable units are going to be in the elevator building? Where's the other one going? And I'm assuming that they'll be interspersed with?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Share your screen again to show us, that's fine.
And the only other question was, where's the other affordable unit going?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yes, the affordable units are spread out evenly and distributed, just like the market unit, so they're, they're spread out. Because the redevelopment plan required the special needs units within the elevator building, that's why the, a large majority of them are within the elevator building. There is a single affordable unit. One of the 11 is located within the stacked flat building, one single unit. But the remainder are within the elevator building. And again, they are dispersed about, we did locate them in the plans that we submitted. They're highlighted, and I think you'll see they're, they're spread about the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin, you go ahead.
McGowan.
Very quickly, please. Is it, is it me or quiet? I see you.
No, it's, it's you, Alvin.
Are these 11 units meant, affordable units meant to comply with, with the town's obligation? I mean, they're the 80.
Yes, that's correct.
They're the 80, but, but do you have 11 you say they are?
Yes, they're part of the town's affordable housing compliance, before the housing units in this development.
And, and just by way of comment, there are minimum unit sizes, floor sizes for the affordable units. That's in order, that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that isn't an order, they're the minimum, so.
Alvin, you, you brought this up at the beginning, and we've been going round and round trying to figure that out, and could Mr. Bridger or Mr. La Place? I, I myself am not clear about where we are with that, could, could one of you speak to this?
I think actually, our land use engineer, Mr. Purcell, has been more on top of this, Jim wants to start it out.
Well, whoever.
Well, I mean, I'm not as, yeah, I mean.
I'm not aware of any additional requirements that are in the affordable housing ordinances, but there are a number of them, and I don't know whether, I'm not up on all of the requirements, but I do believe that 10B-278, which was already discussed, probably has a larger square footage requirement than would be in a, in another ordinance that may be an overlay. I don't know, Mr. McGowan, do you know which ordinance might have these other?
You know, I was thinking, I can't look at the moment, you know, I get back, but I was thinking that was, there is something about, because I didn't bring it up before, I think, and it's either square feet or minimum size, and they could, I think they could be different concepts. And, and I'm fairly sure it was in the ordinance, there's something about that in the ordinance that was passed, you know, the recent ordinance, um.
But I want, I want to comment, my recollection, and it could be wrong, but my recollection is that our old affordable housing standards in town did have minimum unit sizes. And we're passing the new one that was part of our whole affordable housing compliance. We were told that having those requirements was not consistent with U HAC, I think it is, and that they were taken out of the new ordinance because of that. But I, I don't know, does that tell me or Derek?
Yeah.
There were sizes in the old ordinance, and I believe they were removed in the new ordinance, but I, I'm going to check that out and I'll get back to you. Situation.
And what is U HAC?
The Uniform Housing Affordability. Sorry, Mr. McGowan.
That's all right. That's it, that's all I have.
I was just going to say, the applicant had researched, for what it's worth, the applicant researched this issue, and we did not find any minimum unit sizes or for affordable housing units in U HAC or in the ordinance. It's understanding that 10B-278 is the controlling provision, which was raised in the review memos.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Tex Arnie?
Yeah, so I was just wondering if I can comment about the architecture or if there's going to be more testimony about the architecture? Or is that, that it?
That's it, and certainly open up the questions on Mr. Tex Arnie.
All right, thanks. So, yeah, I guess I have a number of questions regarding the architecture, although actually I also have some questions regarding parking, which I guess I probably should have talked about earlier, but I guess it's related, so I'm going to start with that parking. I'm going to start with that parking. In, I guess the plan, I think that there are a few, maybe like two spaces reserved for EV charging. But we, by the PEC and, and myself, believe that's pretty inadequate and especially given the goal of the, the state of 330,000 EVs on the road by 2025. And so we're calling for, asking for at least 10% of the parking spaces to have EV charging stations or at least something close or at least having the wiring conduit ready for that. Related in terms of on a transportation note, we, the PEC was asking for further bike, bike parking and then also potentially having car share on site. And I know that that's you know, challenging considering that you need a third party provider, but you know, seeing that this is a significant amount of units, I think that, that, that probably is desirable for a car sharing company. So I guess I'll start with that, but maybe I'll just continue with the architecture, the actual buildings. One of the other recommendations of PEC is to have the building achieve passive house certification or at least be net zero or zero energy ready or zero energy and also having photovoltaics on the roof. And also making the whole entire building, which is related to zero energy is making it all electric. And not using natural gas, using heat pumps as an alternative. And then finally, there, there's recommendations by both PEC and SPRAB to put a green roof on the clubhouse. And so that's something that would be related to stormwater management and, you know, a lot of people would like to see. So those are some of my comments and brief, so it'd be good to hear responses to those.
So let's start with a question of EV chargers. Is that, Mr. Scapenix, is, are you the right person to talk about that or?
If I can interject, I think maybe Tom Carmen, our landscape architect, could address some of those, especially bicycle parking spaces, EV chargers, seems like landscape architect type.
Okay, well then, what are the things that Mr. Bradford would address? The zero energy ready, solar panels, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so Mr. Bradford, do you, sorry, Mr. Bradford, do you want to just go over all of the, what the applicant has agreed to as part of the redevelopment agreement? And redevelopment plan?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, as required in the redevelopment plan and noted in the, in the green checklist, the project will be designed to lead for home certification as well as Energy Star certification. So that means, you know, Energy Star is version 3.1 for the townhomes and multifamily new construction for the other building types. And it also is committed to in the, in the design of the project to be solar PV ready. So that's what has been committed to in, in this design and planned for in this design.
And all exterior interior lighting to the greatest extent possible is going to be LED?
That is correct, yes.
And we're going to be applying for New Jersey Clean Energy Rebate Programs, most likely.
We will, as we have on, on other Avalon projects, yes.
Thank you.
So there's no plan to be zero energy ready or zero energy building or passive house in terms of that level of energy efficiency?
No, no, not currently.
And what about electrifying the building? Will there be natural gas heating and, and cook stoves?
Yeah, there will be. We haven't committed to a design that's all electric. There, there is natural gas included for very high efficient domestic water heaters and, and for cooking, as you noted.
So did you, you said that there might be heat pumps used for water heating, you said?
No, efficient water heaters.
Oh, so natural gas efficient water heaters.
That's correct.
Okay. You think, oh, sorry, I'm muting myself. Anything about the green roof?
Yeah, we're not, we're not planning on a green roof for the, for the clubhouse.
Mr. Bradford, can you speak to the, is it difficult in your professional opinion or what, what are the challenges you see with going all electric? You know, or with, you know, minimizing the use of natural gas? You know, which is in everybody's best interest climate wise? Can you speak to that as a professional? The ways that you can minimize the use of natural gas in a project like this?
If I could just interject here for a moment, I mean, certainly, you know, in a perfect world, endless budget, we could come up with all sorts of sustainability initiatives, that'd be great, but we're, we're doing as much as we can and we've agreed to a lot and there's, we're complying or even exceeding requirements in the redevelopment plan and what's in the redevelopment agreement. Mr. Carmen will talk a little more about the EV charging units. We are providing a lot more than that's, than is required in the redevelopment agreement. And so I think the applicant is providing a lot of sustainability measures with this project, especially for inclusionary development.
Yes, I, I, I have to commend the applicant for, I guess, trying to, to incorporate sustainability and achieving. Did you say lead, was it lead gold or lead silver? I didn't remember.
Lead, lead for homes. The, the level is to be determined. We're committed to lead for homes.
Okay.
Certification.
Okay. Although I really would advocate for transitioning from natural gas to electric. I, I, I don't know if it necessarily has to be more expensive and I don't think it has to completely eliminate natural gas. But I think that for things like stoves, that's an easy, you know, that's not really that much of a price difference. And for actually heating, you know, I've been doing a lot of research into heat pumps and actually it just, it just seems like such a no brainer. I mean, you know, there's a lot, a lot of people don't really understand heat pumps because it's not a super popular technology. You know, it, it's, it's slightly more expensive, but it's actually really not all that much more. And what you do is instead of having air conditioning system, you just have a heat pump system that does both air conditioning and heating. And what you do is then you actually can use that heat pump for the majority of heating purposes. And heat pumps are actually highly efficient, way more efficient than regular electric heating. About three, two to three to potentially four times more efficient. And because it's not creating heat, it's actually moving heat. And what you, what you do is you use that for most of the time. And then when actually it, it gets really cold, you can use potentially natural gas furnace for, for the rest of the heating. But i- in terms of actually, you know, comparing a heat pump versus an air conditioning system, it's not that much of a price difference, but it makes a huge difference in terms of the efficiency in, in the greenhouse gas emissions that it's emitting. And, you know, I understand that we don't live in a, a perfect world where we can be, you know, everything can be as sustainable and high performance as, as possible. But we're also living in a very dangerous worlds when we're dealing with climate change. And I, I think that this project will hopefully be around for the next 30 to 40 years. And at that point, we need to, the, the, the whole entire planet needs to be net zero. And, you know, I, I might sound like a crazy loon, but this is what our scientists are, are talking about. And, you know, this is the direction we need to go as a society. So I, I really would, would ask that the applicant reconsider and, and reevaluate those things. I really don't think that it's, it's that much of a difference. I think that, you know, also with insulation, you know, you, it's not that much of a difference. And I think that, you know, the savings, you know, you, I guess the applicant or the, the tenants are going to be paying for the, the heating and cooling costs. But I mean, there are areas that, you know, the, the management is going to be paying. And I think that you, you will probably see those savings in the long run. So I, I think that you, we need to start thinking about long-term thinking as opposed to short-term profits. And I, I really do think that that should be considered. So I'm going to get off my, my soapbox for now, but anyways.
If we can, if we can discontinue the screen sharing so that I can see whether anybody else has got questions for Mr. Bradford? Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering, going back to the affordable housing units. So the 11 units that are going to be primarily in building B, yeah, building B and then one in the stack flat. Are those, are specific units being designated as affordable housing units? So for instance, if a, you know, an affordable housing, you know, tenant moves out and a market rate tenant moves out at the same time, you have comparable units. Would, would the one still remain as affordable housing while the other one is still designated as market share or would they be interchange?
No, they would be specified units. There'd be a deed restriction filed against the property specifying the units that are affordable.
Okay, and what is the, what determine, what determines? Is there a specific determination as to which ones are qualifying as market rate versus affordable?
Oh, and the units that are affordable, I, I mean, I think maybe I can help with that. They are for develop, they're group homes for developmentally disabled adults. So the configuration is, and I think there are, the configuration is very different than what would be for a, a, a family. It's, it's not a convertible.
That's true.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Um, oh, Mr. Bridger? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to get back to the unit sizes that Alvin had raised and David is correct, the, there was a ordinance that did have required unit sizes and they were eliminated with the new affordable housing fair share plan ordinance section. But I will note that the 10B 279 does require larger unit sizes for all the units except for an efficiency which is 25 square feet less than was required in the affordable housing. So I think your, your concerns can be allayed here that all the units that are in this project would be bigger than the minimums required by the affordable housing old sizes that were in the old ordinance, so.
Good.
Thanks.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question for Mr. Bradford about the HVAC units, which I assume are, or are they located on top of the buildings? Can you speak a little bit about where they are and with apologies for not being able to read the utility or whichever plan they were on in this set of plans? Where are they and, and what kind of noise deadening features are, or do you have in mind?
Sure, yeah. Well, as far as noise is concerned with the types of systems that are proposed here, the, the noise impacts are pretty minimal. So unlike a, a building that might have a, you know, a central cooling plant or heating plant, these are all individual systems. So each unit has its own system. So that means typically within the unit, there would be a water heater and a, and a fan coil unit within the unit. So as far as noise is concerned, the only thing to think about, think through is the outdoor component and that is a, a condensing unit. And for this particular project, for the townhomes in the stacked flats, those condensing units are located at grade. And for the elevator building, building three, the condensing units are located on the roof. And again, because of the, the, as I noted in the section, just the sheer distance from, from these condensing units in these buildings to neighboring properties and the buffer and all of that, we, we don't expect any noise issues whatsoever because of the systems and the locations that are proposed.
Okay, are, are they, I assume located toward the center of the building so that they're not visible?
Yeah, well, for the building B, the elevator building, where you could see in a, in a section, I think that we included, we did include in the, in the set, we propose a, a wet equipment well, if you will. So the condensing units are, are sunk a bit below the top of the roof and then screened from view. For the stacked flats and the townhomes, they are located at grade, but we learn, we work pretty carefully with, with Mr. Carmen to, to, you know, locate plants to screen those units.
Okay.
And there's less of them, of course, with townhomes and the stacked flats.
Right. Mr. Chow?
So can you expound on, on your fan coil units? You're supplying it. Is it a VRF system for cooling? And then how about for heating? What's your heat source and?
Well, as, as currently planned, the, the hot water heater provides both for domestic and heat. So that's a high efficiency water heater within each apartment. So that, that kind of does double duty, if you will, for heating, the space heating as well as the hot water.
So individual units per, for, for each?
Yeah, high efficiency unit, yes.
And then the condensing units, they're individual per unit?
Exactly.
Okay. So you don't have a larger chiller or larger condensing units that's run through a VRF system? That would be more efficient?
We do not. They're all individual systems, yes.
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes, I just wanted to ask about the emergency generators. Where are they located and who, does everyone get service in an emergency?
Yeah, I mean, that is to be determined. The, the building code would not require emergency generator for this project. So that, that'd be something we'd sort out in the planning.
Would would one be required for the clubhouse or I'm sorry if I'm giving it the wrong name, the community center portion of the project, it wouldn't be, there would be no backup generator anywhere, you're saying?
There wouldn't be one required by code. That, that would be something we, we would probably explore in the planning though, I'm sure. And, and you're right, particularly we might consider it for the clubhouse.
Yeah. Any other, Ms. Sacks? You're muted. There you go.
Yeah, Mr. Bradford, I think that you answered this, but I just want to ask one more time, you know, there are, there's one house on the corner as you enter Thanet. And you know, that I think is, is particularly vulnerable to light and sound. And I, and then there are two more, two more houses which are somewhat proximate. Do you, can you just once again talk about sound and light and, and what impact, if any, there might be from HVAC or, or lighting for those residents there? And, and I, I apologize if you already explained this, but I know that, that is a concern of, of that row and particularly the house on the corner.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Carmen may elaborate on the site lighting and, and you know, potential concerns and impacts there. But as I said, as far as noise impacts, I, we really just don't expect any. But it's something we will study, certainly. But just because of the, the, just the sheer distance between the proposed buildings and neighboring properties.
Okay, so you don't think that those, that the house on the corner, any, any of those houses, those four houses that are right? Okay. So you don't think that those, that the house on the corner, any, any of those houses, those four houses that are right, you know, to the right, when you turn into Thanet would hear any of the, the, the motors or noises or from the HVAC?
I wouldn't expect so, but it will be something we'll study during the development of the design.
Great. Thank you.
Louise?
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask Mr. Bradford a question. You enumerated a number of sustainability elements, including LED lighting, where feasible, um, solar ready roofs, um, energy store, lead for homes, et cetera. And you indicated that you were committed to that. Are those all in the redevelopment agreement? Or maybe Peter can answer that.
Um, I believe, Mr. Mueller, I believe there are some sustainability requirements, but we are exceeding some of those requirements. I know, for instance, the, uh, the EV chargers, I think we're exceeding what's required as part of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. Because I was trying to figure out which of these should be conditions or?
Yeah, I think LED lighting to the greatest extent feasible is a requirement. Designing in accordance with LEED certification guidelines, that these are redevelopment agreement requirements that were negotiated between the, the applicant and, and Princeton.
Oh, okay. So it appears that, and then the same with the, uh, solar ready roof?
Don't see that in the agreement. Could be though. No, I think that may have been in response to Sprab comments.
Okay. So I would put that down as a condition. In terms of the energy store, um, and lead for home certification, you say?
That is in the redevelopment agreement. Yes.
Okay. And you, you may apply for the green energy rebate program. Is that in the, I don't, I don't know that to have to be conditioned anyway, but is that in the redevelopment agreement?
I don't think that is. That's something that the applicant typically would do.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you.
And now I think of it, Mr. Mueller, I think solar might be in the plan. Not in the agreement, the solar ready roofs.
Oh, okay. Jim, do you have a handle on that? Jim here?
No, I, I, I actually do not have a handle on that. Sorry.
That's all right. Oh, we can check that.
Jerry, it was part of the, uh, Sprab recommendation that the roofs be solar ready.
Okay.
And specifically the south facing roofs, uh, clear of penetrations.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, um, questions for Mr. Bradford related to architecture? Mr. Cohen?
But I know one of the comments, I think from either from PEC or Sprab was to use cementitious siding instead of vinyl. When you gave your presentation, I thought I heard you say that it was going to be cement siding along with some stone and, um, other materials. So can you just confirm, are, are you using any vinyl siding?
Yeah, um, we do, um, propose some vinyl siding and, and we do include that in the application. And as you, as you noted, and I noted in the presentation, there is a quite a bit, a variation of, of, and a selection of materials and quite a bit of cement board as well. But we, we are exploring the use of, of even more fiber cement in the design as we move forward.
I would love to say, you know, as the project budget gets closer to, um, getting nailed down, that would be a nice upgrade for sure. To, I'm sure you'd like to do it too.
Agreed. Um, Mr. Bradford, you mentioned, um, wood accent panels. Are those actual wood?
No, no, they would not be actual wood. They'd be, uh, simulated wood likely in a, in a fiber cement panel. There are multiple, uh, products that can give the, the look of wood, but the, you know, easier maintainable surface.
Okay. Ms. Sacks?
I, is the color palette that you presented tonight the final decision? Because I thought I remembered an earlier iteration of a different color, a slightly different variation of a, of that color panel, which seemed much more attractive.
No, I, it's not final. It's something we will definitely work through, um, as we develop the design. So these are, these are concepts really.
Okay.
And I, I would just comment that computer renderings are notoriously difficult to get the color just right. So, um, you know, one thing I'd like to suggest is whether it's the Land Safes Subcommittee or somebody, take a look at it, actual material samples, um, at some point. I know it's a little harder to do virtually. So maybe it, but at some point I'd like to have some subcommittee of the board looking at the actual materials, if that would be possible.
And David, I assume you mean by that, that, um, they would have some kind of approval power. It's not simply looking at it that if they don't.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you know, it's not. I know it's not strictly within our purview, but.
That, that is normally in the purview of Sprab. And if you want, we could set up a subcommittee to review the palette.
I, I would think that would be great.
Yeah. That's a meeting you can have outdoors.
Would that be instead of the landscape subcommittee?
Yes, for materials, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Purcell?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to, uh, request that, um, uh, as, as a condition of approval, I, I do not yet have a chart or table identifying the size of all the units and the size of all the bedrooms. We did see a single example that they are conforming, but I, but Derek and I do have to make sure that the entire complex conforms to 10B 278. So if, uh, if we could get a, a table of the different configurations of the units and the different sizes of the bedrooms in those units, we can then confirm that everything is, it's, that they don't need a variance. Seeing what we saw tonight, we don't believe they need a variance, but.
Right.
We need to confirm all of the units.
We can certainly provide that, but it's with the understanding that at, at this point in time, everyone's in agreement that there's no variance. There are no variances period required for the, the project.
Louise, I'd actually like to propose something slightly different, um, than Sprab being the, um, arbiter of the color scheme because, um, you know, it's a small committee with, um, its own tastes. I think, you know, this neighborhood, the neighborhood is, you know, uh, going to be on the front lines of having to look at these buildings. And so I'd like to recommend that the, um, developer, uh, which I, and I think they have offered to have meetings with the neighborhood. I, I think that's the sort of decision that would be best made in consultation with the neighbors who actually are going to be watching the building.
But Mia, would there be an, an, an entity on the town side that would be part of that? I mean, uh, you're not suggesting that the neighbors have veto power, or are you?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't, I think this is an iterative process and I feel comfortable enough with the way it's gone thus far that, I, I think, um, I, I don't know that anyone would necessarily have veto power. I think, um, that we would just ask the developer to do what they've offered to do, which is that when things get farther, far enough along, they would, meet with the neighbors to get their input into some of these, um, you know, aesthetic decisions.
Yeah, I, I think that your point about consultation is a really, really good one. And um, maybe if that happens before materials are presented to Sprab, you know, then I, but I, I mean, to, I'm not trying to split the baby, but Mr. Mueller's point about some municipal board ultimately, you know, being the, the final green light after the neighbors, um, you know, have been consulted and have had an opportunity to weigh in. Do you think that, is that meet your?
Well, it wouldn't. It's gone through Sprab already, right? It wouldn't go, normally go back to Sprab.
Well, just, just this.
Actually, it would. Sprab is described as having that purview and uh, since the applicant has not finalized the palette yet, it would make sense for that to be a sprab review. It also obviously could include, prior to that, they could include meetings with neighbors, but.
If I could just interject here for a moment respectfully, I, um, this is kind of getting a little unwieldy, uh, unwieldy. You know, we're talking about a color scheme and it seems like we're getting the entire municipality involved and in approving this. You know, maybe it makes more sense to have the board's professionals weigh in, uh, on, on the colors. Um, you know, certainly there's been input through the sprab process and through this hearing, uh, from the public and, and other members of, of the board, uh, you know, having input into, into design. Uh, it's just, it's a.
In fact, in Princeton, Sprab is the professional board.
But the meeting that Sprab has where it looks at these things can be open to the public as all of them are, I believe, and with neighbors specifically invited?
Good idea.
I, I would. I know this Mia, but I'm looking at you.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, I, I, in other words, Sprab is made up of, you know, people who have their specific aesthetic taste. And that's, you know, but I think really.
And licenses.
Well, uh, you know, this is about sort of perception, aesthetic perception of what people have to live with on a daily basis. So I'd really love to give the neighbors the chance to, um, you know, weigh in on, uh, you know, what they feel comfortable with. I, I mean, I, I'm not, I, I think it's a great first, for Sprab to weigh in as well. But my, I, my understanding was that Sprab already weighed in, um, on the color palette. Um, and I, I, I think they, they weren't happy with it and I agree. Uh, but it ultimately, I think it, it, I mean, I, I, what I would, you know, I, I think what would make the most sense is for our staff, for our planner, to basically just make sure that the neighborhood is satisfied and that those meetings have taken place with the developer. I mean, I think that, that's what I think would make the most sense.
Well, I think, I think the consensus that I'm hearing is, is certainly the neighbor should be consulted, or the idea that it has to be a determination that the neighborhood, the neighbors are all satisfied. I think that's a step too far to tell you the truth, because I think that'd be very hard to do.
No, no, just that they've.
I agree, Ms. Mueller.
Just that they've been consulted.
Yeah.
They certainly could be invited to the, to a meeting.
Well, I, I think even the idea of, of before that, um, Avalon consulting with the neighbors as Mia suggests a good thought.
Right. I think that. Talk with neighbors and get, and, and present the findings and, um, and whatnot to Sprab. Is that what we're talking about?
But it's a subcommittee of Sprab, right? It's, it's not.
A subcommittee of Sprab.
Well, again, respectfully, you know, we've been through Sprab. That was a public meeting. There were members of the public there who asked questions, provided comments, had input. We have a public.
No, I'm not, sir. We do not have public input at Sprab.
Well, there were members of the public who were asking questions.
So I, I, I don't want to just go around in circles on this. I mean, I, unless you're going to die in a ditch over this, Mr. Flannery, I think it makes sense to consult with the neighbors, go back to Sprab. It's, it's a two-step thing.
Louise, I opened this up and I really regret having opened this up. I, um, but I, I don't, we are under a tight timeline. I'm not recommending that we send this back to Sprab. I am, I think that we should request that the developer, um, have a meeting, one meeting with Sprab and, and with the Sprab Subcommittee and, and the neighbors, one meeting to get their input. And, you know, I think it's a request and I would leave it at that.
I, I do. I actually was the, the one who brought up the idea of seeing physical samples of materials and with respect, Mr. Flannery, that's an absolutely ordinary requirement of any project that comes before any planning board. I think it's a reasonable thing to say that we haven't had an opportunity to review the actual material palette yet. So somebody should do it. I think that it's very complicated to have the neighbors do it. I apologize Mia, but I think council would need, or the planning board would need to pre-qualify, just like we're doing for the Franklin, Franklin Task Force. I mean, if we want to let people who have no formal role with the municipality make a decision for the municipality, we're going to have to create a committee formally and empower them. And I think if you're concerned about timing, that's a much more serious thing.
Maybe I wasn't talking about the quality or the, you know, that I would absolutely, I think, and I think Sprab already weighed in on some of the materials that they were unhappy with. I was really just talking about the color, which is a very subjective thing and doesn't require a licenser training. But I do think there are a number of people there who are going to be looking at the buildings. And if they really dislike the color palette, it seems like it would be nice to give them a chance to, you know, and if there's a consensus, fine. If there's not, there's fine, it's fine. I think that the developer had offered that already. I didn't really, you know, I didn't want to make this an analysis of the, you know, uh, the, the materials. I mean, I think that's what Sprab was already supposed to have provided in their report. And I, and I, from what I remember, um, they did express some concerns. I wasn't proposing a second bite at the apple.
Review of, uh, materials proposed at a meeting that's open to the, that, well, like, open to the public and, and specifically to public input, but not a series of meetings and not a special, uh,
And, and there were actually members of, and there were, I don't know what the normal policy is, but there were members of the public at that, at our Sprab meeting that reviewed this.
And if I could just interject, I mean, perhaps we wait till the next meeting, next month. And in advance of that meeting, the applicant presents proposed materials, the color palette, and the public hearing with public input, including members of Sprab, could be the next planning board hearing in November. That way we get public input and we're not slowing the, uh, the process down.
I think that's a great idea. And I think, I think the physical samples should be brought to the municipal building. There'd be a sample board.
We can certainly accommodate. Yeah, that's a good, it's a good suggestion, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr.? Okay, it is 10 after 10. Um, uh, Mr. Flannery, were you thinking Mr. Carmen would be up next?
Mr. Carmen would be the next witness and he's certainly available now if, if, uh, the board entertain another witness. Um, he's certainly ready to go, uh, can address all the comments. I know that there were.
Can I just ask how many more professionals?
He's the only professional remaining, uh, since there's no longer a variance, uh, on the table. Um, that would just be Mr. Carmen.
Okay, before, um, before you start, Mr. Carmen, I noted that there's a, a question raised about when we would hear from members of the public. Um, and as I mentioned at the very, very beginning of the meeting, which I'm, um, realize not necessarily everybody would have heard. We, um, we can take questions for individual, um, professionals, you know, specific questions as they testify, but, um, testimony and public comment more broadly takes place after all of the, um, professionals have testified and there's been back and forth with, um, municipalities, professionals and the applicants and board members have asked questions, et cetera. So basically it's at the end of the, of the proceedings. Um, I think it's safe to say that we'll go beyond tonight. Um, and, um, we can talk about whether we want to reserve like the last 15 minutes from, from 10:45 to 11:00 to hear from the public tonight, just in case people can't be here at the meeting on, uh, November 5th. Um, but I just wanted people to know that basically the time for testimony is when all is said and done, uh, on the part of the applicant. And I know it requires a lot of patience. So. With that said, let's, let's hear from Mr. Carmen.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Carmen?
Yes.
Previously sworn, if you could be qualified, if you could just briefly describe your education experience and licensure for the board?
Sure, sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure. My name's Thomas S. Carmen, C.A.R.M.A.N. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey, a graduate from Rutgers University, hold a degree in landscape architecture, principal with the firm Maloan Bauer Associates located in Brielle, New Jersey. And been practicing license since 1997, have had the pleasure of appearing before this board, West Windsor, Roseland, Maplewood, Bernard's Township, multiple municipalities on similar applications.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. I ask that the board accept Mr. Carmen's qualifications as an expert in landscape architecture.
We accept those qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Carmen, are you going to be referring to the exhibit package as well on the shared screen?
I will be. So I'm going to share my screen right now and and everybody I, I would imagine is seeing it at this point. So I'm using the, the submission package or the, the exhibit package that one of 21 slides, I'm going to jump around a little bit. They, but this is the overall landscape plan that has been testified to in the past. This is A11. So we have a richly detailed landscape plan that includes a diverse and hearty palette of both ornamental as well as native plant material along the street frontages, the buffers, building foundations and the amenity spaces. All the plant material has been selected based on some sun shade locate conditions. And the plant beds have really been laid out to kind of minimize some of the maintained lawn, right? In an effort to, to reduce irrigation. There is an irrigation system that's proposed. It includes a weather-based controller for efficiency and water conservation. Site boundaries include some buffer planting, seed mixes to kind of naturalize and, and continue into that fringe area. Behind the townhomes of E, F and G on the, the northeast side, we have supplemented that existing vegetation with enhanced evergreen buffer for the neighboring residents at Governor's Lane. So in general, we have over 35 different varieties of plant material and moving to and it jumped to the next image. Oh, there we go. So this is A17. This shows, this shows the, the shade trees. We have deciduous trees proposed throughout the community, the recreation areas, maple, honey locusts, oak, sweet gum. These are, these are varieties that actually exist. Some of them exist on site today. So we know that they're appropriate for the use and will do well and, and work with the surrounding context. The environmental commission did make a recommendation. We did have some, some longer runs of essentially the same species. So like a run of 20, 25 or so trees in, in a row before we switch to another variety. So we will accommodate that recommendation to bring those numbers down to something more along the lines of eight or 10 trees in a row before we switch to another variety. On the, the right-hand side here, you're looking at some of the ornamental trees that are proposed, dogwoods, cherry, red bud, some of the plants that we're using to provide some seasonal interest and really accent the landscape. Moving to A18. So what we've done, again, this is not all the plants. This is just a, a kind of a selection, maybe half of the, the plant material that is proposed. But we kind of curated this, this design, planting design, a palette of native ornamental plants that work within like the courtyard, within the pool area. On site, we're happy to say that there are like seven locations where there are rain gardens and we're using some, some native plants within there that will take, you know, wet feed and then at times dry out. So really selecting the right material for that kind of an application. This pollinator meadow, right? We're using some, some plants that along the fringes that habitat creation, plants for pollinators, bees, birds. Again, this is at the fringe areas. And then we have a townhome or the residential building plant palette that kind of blurs the lines of some of these other areas where we're using some deciduous evergreen shrubs as well as some ornamental grasses and such. Now jumping to A13. So both the landscape architectural comment letter and the engineer's review letter, both of them referenced the fact that we were four, we were short four trees. And we were also short a couple of parking lot islands. So we put this exhibit together to just show the location where we're adding those four trees. And then we also showed where we were adding two parking spaces. So that way we could take two parking spaces away to put an island in, right? So this shows that we're able to comply with, with those two requirements. In, in Mr. Dobremilsky's October 10th letter, he did indicate that the planting design is by no means sparse, but he did indicate that there were a few select locations where potentially some additional trees could be located. A few opportunities where some additional buffering could be done. And then also he's recommended adding some evergreen ground cover in some of the parking lot islands. And we're happy to work with him to, to work through, identify those locations and, and enhance the plan further. Both the shade tree commission and Mr. Dobremilsky identified the tree replacement requirements per the, the tree removals. So as indicated earlier, the, in the civil plan set, there is a tree removal plan that indicates all the trees to come down. That also has the calculations in terms of what is required for replacements. So the, for the Avalon Bay portion, right? We're looking at this overall plan where the subdivided pearl portion with the, the yellow tone on it. The Avalon Bay portion, we're, we're short 53 trees based on what we're proposing to put back once the, the removals are done. As I mentioned, we're adding four trees in, so that number drops down to 49. We will work with Mr. Dobremilsky and add some additional trees in some areas. So that number is going to come down yet further. But I just want to mention that if, if we look at this site holistically and we think about the, the removal of the trees for the Avalon Bay as well as the Pearl site. And then we work through those numbers. I say this because we're fortunate enough to be the landscape architect for the Pearl site as well. At the completion, when we, when we run all the numbers at a minimum without adding these other trees that I'm speaking about, as a whole, we're going to be 14 trees in excess of what, what the requirement would be. Now jumping to A12. This is essentially a rendered version of the circulation plan that was within our site plan package. And this shows all the connectivity to the various buildings, shows how one could via the orange dashes gain access from one building to another. It also indicates some of the open space areas. Also indicates the, the various bike exterior bike rack locations. So there are six bike rack locations throughout the site for a total 19 racks to accommodate 38 exterior bikes. In the October 15th environmental commission review letter, comment letter, they did ask that at building D, we add an additional rack as well as in the rear of building B, and we're happy to accommodate that. The applicant was pleased to be able to do that. Related to the environmental commission's comment letter or some of the comments earlier, there was mention of the EV chargers. So redevelopment plan requires that there are two EV chargers on the site. We're actually proposing six EV chargers on the exterior and then also all of the townhomes have that capability. So more for a total of 34 as opposed to the required two. The, I'm going to jump to the next exhibit. So this is exhibit A14. This exhibit was specifically generated in response to our sprab meeting a week or so ago. And Mr. Wolf earlier went through and identified the four locations where just some simple modifications to the sidewalk make some of the pedestrian circulation a bit more natural. So the one location over by the clubhouse over here at the, that northeast corner of building B where we would roll that sidewalk around. Again, it's a more natural circulation pattern. It does mean that, you know, people who are parking here, there isn't the sidewalk right adjacent to it, but we're happy to make these accommodations in the rear of building B, rolling that sidewalk along. And then again, that long sidewalk that was spoken about, just creating a, a crosswalk right there to link that up. The crosswalks, again, earlier conversation during testimony, question and answer was related to crosswalks. And all of the crosswalks right now are, are flush crosswalks, painted crosswalks. Just from a grading perspective, drainage perspective, having the water flow to various inlets, raising them causes some, some trouble related to that. The crosswalk heading over towards the, the bus stop, this is something that we could explore the, the possibility of doing a textured crosswalk there in an effort to, for some traffic calming, if that is something that, that's within the right of way. So from a snow plowing maintenance perspective, that's something that the town, if they would be happy with, with that adjustment on our side. The other, one of the other items in the sprab letter and, and during the, the meeting that we had, the idea of pedestrians walking out this way, heading to the, the retail areas. We've added, well, we will add benches in these two locations. So these two benches actually would supplement because we did have a couple of benches in front of the townhomes already, which will remain part of the plan. Those, we did those looking at, in terms of than it, looking towards the complete streets with incorporating the street trees, the lights, the, the parallel parking, the bump out at the, the parallel parking, incorporating rain gardens there, the benches, just really kind of activating that streetscape. So just extending, putting some benches down there is a, is a natural extension. Jumping back to A11, this we've all seen before. As I had indicated, the, the walkways link up to, to some of the various open space areas. So at the townhomes, there are a couple of gathering nodes where just some pavement, lush planting around it, barbecue grill associated adjacent to building H, and then just some, some quiet sitting spaces in between the townhomes. Same thing between building E and F on the, the northeast side. And then as indicated Avalon Bay, pet friendly. And that we have a dog run located in adjacent to building C and the maintenance building. Dog run itself is enclosed by a fence. It includes what we call a leashing vestibule. So somebody could bring their pet in there, unleash it or leash it prior to getting into the area where the dog would be. We are proposing it as the, the canine turf. It's a synthetic turf that's specifically engineered for this kind of an application. We like it from the purpose of it's a pervious material. So water does flow down and through it. It's, it is some of the other options that we have used in the past such as like wood chips. The issue with that is it just, the pet waste gets absorbed by it. And we feel it's just not a good solution. So then what we look to is asphalt or concrete. And those are just impervious materials that, that we don't like to use. So then it goes to gravel as the last remaining material and gravel. There's a lot of maintenance associated with it. It travels. Or you do something like stone dust, which over time compacts and it's almost like asphalt or concrete. So we've had a lot of success with the synthetic turf and, and we'd like to, to push forward with that. Now I'm going to move to, to enlargement plans at the, the two courtyard spaces. So here we have an enlargement. This is A15 clubhouse. And then building B and showing the, the space in between. So kind of as an extension of the interior of the clubhouse, we have exterior space with a fire pit, some wonderful lounge seating, barbecue grilling opportunities, grove of some trees and then a, a pool with shade structure and some sun terrace around it. Just on the other side of building B, we're moving to the, the passive courtyard space. So in towards the upper left of this space, this is where there's a shade trellis and barbecue grilling opportunities. Again, another fire pit within here and then some, some tables and chairs make their way under a grove of trees. Right towards the parking area, there's a lawn panel that is, is split, that's separated by a linear rain garden. This is just the whole, this whole courtyard space would flow into that rain garden. The, the last jumping back again to A11, just to, to touch on site lighting. So today out there, there are 20-foot-high poles that have, they're not LED fixtures. I believe they're high-pressure sodium or metal halide, so not the most efficient. And they don't have any, any houseside shields or, or any downward focusing. So, so not the best fixture. I think what we're proposing, the fixtures are all LED, they're dark sky compliant. They have houseside shields, very responsible lighting design, creating good uniformity throughout. Also just related to the neighbors from Governor's Lane side, right? The location of buildings E, F and G, just by the placement, the, the site plan itself, that will also help to screen any lighting. The, the residential homes along Turhune, there is a, there is a considerable distance to this area. And I do, I strongly believe that the, the lighting that we're proposing is a much more efficient, responsible design than the lighting that's out there today. So I think it will be an improvement. There are, last item to, to note are related to signs. Before I jump to signs, though, I just see the bus stop here and just to the, the landscape plans that are submitted do have a detail of that bus stop and it does show that it was, that it does have a roof. That wasn't a, a sprab comment and, and the plans do in fact have that. This is an area where we do have a rain garden associated with it and, and we thought that it would be a great spot to do an educational plaque right there next to the bus stop. If children are waiting for a bus, just again, you know, continuing that education related to it. A sign down at Turhune and Thanet at the intersection, this is a sign that will identify both Pearl as well as the Avalon Bay development. And then once we come in just in front at the, at the roundabout in front of the, the clubhouse associated with a seat wall is another sign. Both of these signs fully compliant with the redevelopment plan and are uplit with a ground-mounted light. That concludes my direct test. That concludes my direct testimony on landscape architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. Um, that's all I have. Mr. Carmen, if the board has any questions?
Yes, there are really pressing questions. I think we should definitely try to get to public comment and, and I apologize that people have had to wait so terribly long for it, but I don't think that it makes sense to devote only the last fifteen minutes of the meeting to public comment. And in fact, there might be some comments and specific questions related to architecture because I know people have concerns about fire safety features. So are there any real pressing questions right now related to what Mr. Carmen just showed us? Which is really interesting in a lot of ways. And at some point I want to, want to go back and talk about exactly what the streets look like.
I just, I just have a
Let's
I just
Excuse me, Mr. Muller, go ahead.
Yeah, just a real quick request. Tom, if you could put just in the short letter form, an explanation about the, the shade trees because I, I didn't follow those, the shade trees and other trees because I think I, I just didn't follow those numbers and just, just something real simple is to how you, how, how you arrived at your conclusions.
I can do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So I have a quick question in terms of process. So are we going to move the rest of the meeting to another meeting or are we going to try to?
No, well, we're gonna, we have a hard stop at eleven. Between now and eleven, what I would like to do is hear from members of the public. I do not, we, we will not finish this tonight.
Okay.
Um, I expect that there will be, well, certainly not expecting to finish it in the next half hour because we probably have more public comments and we'll take a half hour, but so I do expect it'll be carried to, to the first November meeting.
That would be November fifth.
That, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Carrie and Michael and
I've already scheduled the meeting. Yes.
Okay, okay.
And if I may, if I just may advise the public that there will be no further notice and as, as was just indicated, this meeting will be continued on the fifth of November.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, are we done with questions of Mr. Carmen? Are, are we going to open it to the public for questions and then comments?
I, I would not say there will be no questions or for Mr. Carmen. But I feel it's important to begin to hear from the public. So I can't pay attention to my screen and my text at the same time. Do we have members of the public who are waiting to speak, David? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misjudging this.
Well, at this time only Kip Cherry has her hand up.
Okay.
I think you're right that she'll have some comments about fire safety and we'll see if anybody else raises their hand, but I'm bringing Kip over now.
Okay. So Kip, Ms. Cherry has been sworn. Does she need to be, I assume that that carries
Correct.
Throughout the meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I came here specifically to talk about fire safety and to second, the recommendations in SBRAB's report. And unfortunately, SBRAB did not delineate what those recommendations were and just referred to the bill that is now going through the legislature, S twenty fifty-one. And I thought it would be useful to say what those requirements are and hope that you all will consider them regarding conditions for the project because fire safety is very important. And I got a little alarmed when we started talking about colors and I said, wait a minute, gotta talk about fire safety because fire safety affects the massing of the buildings and their location. So, and as I said, you can include in your conditions requirements related to that or, or requests. In the SBRAB report, there's a specific quote I want to read and that is the recommendation is that, this is the number one recommendation, that the project comply with the imminent updates to the New Jersey Fire Codes in New Jersey Senate Bill twenty fifty-one. And twenty fifty-one, S twenty fifty-one, has it been formulated and introduced by Senator Loretta Weinberg, who is the Senate Majority Leader. So she's put her, her, her oomph behind getting this bill through and this is a topic that has been discussed by the legislature for the last at least three years, maybe much more than that. So I've been working on this issue and I'm very concerned about it. There have been these huge conflagrations all over the nation with lightweight wood construction buildings. And so that's what we're talking about here. And in New Jersey, we've had two huge conflagrations in Edgewater. We had a huge one in Maplewood, another in Lakewood and we had in our own town Princeton at Griggs Farm, we had a fire and unfortunately a woman died. So these are serious matters. And as I said, so far the regulations have been very lax and we've had some issues about trying to settle on final requirements. And these affect affordable housing, market rate housing, everything. I happen to be a professional planner myself, so I've had a real interest in this thing. And one of the things that's been happening is that in these fires, people just get out of the building in time to save their lives and they're unable very often to save their possessions and they even lose their pets. And so these are, these are, these are very serious fires. And if you ever had time between now and November fifth, you might look at YouTube and look at the Maplewood Fire right here in New Jersey. The Maplewood Fire shot off these huge sparks because these buildings often include some composites. And also, as I said, that their wood frame and the sparks are really pushed the fire along and often spread the fire to the neighborhood. So I would really recommend that you look at the, the videotape. The key points in the bill that you should just keep in mind and think about. The first one is that detached structures should be limited to twelve thousand square feet per story. Now, these, these requirements would affect the site plan. So that's why I was getting a little alarmed when we're talking about colors and I'm thinking, well, you know, the site plan needs more discussion. Detached structures, limited to twelve thousand, as I said, a fire separation distance of thirty feet between buildings. No more than three stories and no more than forty feet high. Unless, and if the building is unprotected and doesn't have the other requirements for fire safety, it would be limited to two stories. NFPA sprinklers, thirteen sprinklers. Fire partitions between dwelling units that must have a two hour fire resistance rating and extend from foundation to the roof. Firewalls between buildings capable of passing a hose stream test. And finally, a twenty-four seven fire watch by a trained fire official. My hope is that you will really seriously look at these requirements. And as I said, they were recommended by SBRAB. And I hope that the site plan can be adjusted to try to meet these requirements. So that's my, that's my statement. That's my concern. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could be heard?
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Yes, Mr. Muller.
Yeah, I, I mean, Kip, everything you've pointed out, I mean, all the concerns are totally legitimate. The problem is, in my opinion, the board does not have the authority to impose any of the provisions in, in the, in the statute that's now before the legislature. A, a lot of them are, are building code related. There are some that is zoning related, but they haven't, not only, they're not, they're not authorized by statute because the statute has not been adopted. And they're not authorized, and they're not authorized by our ordinance, which has its own requirements as to height, et cetera. And it's not, but it's not a distance between buildings standard in the, in the statute. It's a distance between buildings.
Obviously Avalon Bay would have to agree to these requirements and I see it as in their interest because for one thing, they have big losses when they, if they have a fire. And it's a good marketing tool for people, residents going into their buildings to know that they, these buildings have enhanced fire protection. So yes, I agree, the state building code can only be formulated by the legislature and passed by the legislature and then the, the towns implement the fire code. But as I said, this, this is going to happen. It's just going to take a little time to, to get through the legislature and it would, it would be a good thing if Avalon Bay would try to meet the, these requirements as much as they can.
And Peter, may
Thank you, Kip, or Mr. Cohen, Mr. Muller, are you finished that?
Well, I was going to ask Peter, maybe at the beginning of the next session. They could respond with anything that they're, they're willing to do voluntarily with, with respect to this. But it would have to, as, as Kip pointed out, we would have to be voluntary.
Mr. Cohen?
I just want to suggest that contrary to what Kip is saying, it does not require redesign of the site plan because if the buildings were non-combustible, they could
That's true.
Their current configuration. And in fact, light metal framing is non-combustible under the terms of the legislation that is being brought this S two twenty fifty-one. I was taking a look at it earlier today. So, and the, the last comment I'll make is that I've been hearing from people in the construction industry that wood, light wood framing has tripled in price in the last month or two. And it's not quite clear if it's just demand from COVID or the wildfires in the West Coast, which have taken out millions of acres of lumber, apparently. And the lumber industry's really been hit hard. So my suggestion to the applicant is to do a cost comparison of wood framing to light metal framing, which is usually quite competitive. And see if there might be any interest in shifting the building in that direction. It would require different detailing, but probably almost no change to the design.
Or masonry. That's another alternative construction material.
That's correct as well. But from a cost comparative standpoint, I think the light metal might be more competitive.
That's a great suggestion. Mr. Flannery?
Yes, in response to these comments, thank you, Ms. Cherry, for your, your comments. Yes, the applicant cannot agree as a condition of approval to comply with Senate Bill twenty fifty-one for many of the reasons that Mr. Muller stated, but the applicant is committed to implementing some measures that go beyond the current building codes and we will provide a list of that prior to the next hearing, as Mr. Muller suggested. So that the board has that, the, the members of the public have that and we can, we can discuss that at the next hearing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, are there other folks waiting to?
Yes, Janet Herou has put in the chat that her hand is raised. It's not raised in the panel, but I'm going to bring her over.
Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Cherry. Thanks, Kip.
Hi, can any, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm, I'm going to swear you, I'm going to swear you in if you could.
Oh, Jerry, you muted yourself.
I see. I'm going to swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn. Could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Annette Herou, H E R O U X, as in X-ray.
And Ms. Herou, we've sort of gotten out of the habit of asking what street you live on, but I'd like to get back into that habit. So could you just say?
Yes.
What road do you live on?
I live right on the corner of Thanet and Turhune. At three eight, you can see my house in the, in the site plan. And I, I don't really have a question to any of the, of, of members of the applicant's team. It's more to the town officials. As I've sat through three, over three four hours now of this, the applicant has indicated that this massive development and is fine, but have, have stated that, that the development will not add to the flooding or the degradation of wetlands. It won't affect traffic. It won't contribute light. It won't contribute noise. That all of this will have absolutely no impact on the neighborhood. That's effectively every answer they've given tonight. Do the, do you officials, are you convinced that this is all true? Because I'm not a professional. And citizens and taxpayers depend on you all to protect our interests. I think much of what's been said about the development tonight is very positive. But it makes me very nervous when, when the, the statement is this, we didn't agree to this and it's not going to have any impact. And I mean, if we have no leverage, why have these long meetings? Question.
Janet, I would ask specifically, I mean, I, I agree. I don't think that you can put that level of development in a space and there's no impact. I, I'm not sure that I heard that there was not going to be any impact. I think I heard a commitment to mitigate certain impacts that are of concern such as flooding and noise and light and so on. But I think you in particular are at the forefront, which is why I asked the question that I did earlier. And so I think you should ask the questions that you are most concerned about.
Well, one question is light and light pollution. You know, when I, whoops, did I just leave?
No, no.
My battery, my battery is getting low. Um, that I don't, you know, I don't know what LE, LED. Problem is, is I don't understand the technical vocabulary. I want to know that the lights are, are going to go off at night and not shine all night long. I mean, resident, you know, people with their bedroom lights on is one thing, but you know, tall street lights is another. The lighting guy, the landscape architect guy said it would be an improvement, but I don't know what that means. And flooding, I tell you, when it rains, there's a lot of water going through our backyard. A lot of water and the edges of the stream are becoming degraded. Don't, you know, I don't know whether what they say is true that they're going to, it's going to be. I guess, I guess I feel like I sat all evening and I have the same questions about the same concerns. I'm not that worried about color. I think the development's kind of pretty and I like the selection of trees. But no traffic, David was calculating, you know, two every two minutes there'll be a car, but that's not the way traffic patterns go. Everyone's going to flood out at night and the traffic will get stopped at that light and it will stream way back to in front of our house. And you know, I, I just.
Oh, I could have, she's perhaps not able to hear, but we could have Mr. Carmen address the lighting issue.
Yes, and I, I hate that we seem to have lost her because I, I mean, I think some of her points, you know, very well taken. I mean, I, I didn't hear as Mia pointed out that you know, changes would not happen. Obviously they will with traffic and lighting and but the stormwater situation might marginally improve. Anyway, I do think
I think her computer died. Should we give her a chance to call back? She's probably going to plug it in. Should we?
I thought that she already had plugged it in, but maybe, maybe not.
Want to maybe poll the public to see if there are any other members of the public have questions of Mr. Carmen?
I think that's a good idea. One more hand raised. Another familiar face, Mike Pizarro.
Good.
Bringing him back in.
Hello again, uh, Mike Pizarro from the Watershed Institute. I don't necessarily have a question, but just as a comment, what I'm going to ask and urge the board to do is at the, at the next meeting, make sure that all of the issues that Mr. Scoopian mentioned in his report and the inconsistencies are resolved, um, before the board passes on this. Ultimately, the board's obligation to make sure that the plan meets the stormwater requirements. And, uh, I'll be honest, I don't remember whether I thought I heard or the applicant's engineer mentioned, you know, these, this development is going to increase the volume that runs off this site. So while, you know, I understand Mr. Scoopian saying the overall drainage area of this site versus the rest of Harries Brook is not really significant to the people immediately adjacent to this site. The volume will increase. Uh, so that will be an issue. But again, just urge the board to make sure that all of the stormwater ma- matter, uh, stormwater management issues are resolved before the next hearing. Make sure you get that testimony on place, uh, before you pass judgment on this plan. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, and I look forward to the November hearing.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Pizarro. Anybody else, Mr. Cohen?
Uh, we do not have any more hands up.
Madam Chair, for the record, if we could maybe just have Mr. Carmen briefly respond to Ms. Rose's question regarding the lighting. We could close out.
My concern is that she is not here to hear what he says. And, uh, what I was thinking is that we, um, should conclude this meeting. It's been a really long night and, um, make sure that she's able to join us at the next meeting. If she's not, then we won't, you know, we're not gonna certainly carry it past then, but, you know, address the, uh, questions that, that she raised and also, um, as Mr. Pizarro suggested, make sure that everything that was raised in Mr. Scoopian's memo is buttoned down and, um, and have the applicant present i- in writing, and I guess also in testimony, the ways it will go above and beyond what's required in terms of fire safety. Um, and hopefully, when we reconvene in, uh, on November fifth, you know, it's not gonna take a bunch of time to finish up. But I would, I ask my colleagues what you think about that, because I, I'm a little fried right now.
Louise, could I ask Joe Scoopian a question?
Yeah, Mr. Scoopian, are you still there? Yeah, there you are. Yeah.
I mean, your, your report had a lot of stuff and a lot of things had to be addressed. And their engineer agreed that they were gonna address every one of them, and they were gonna work what he wanted and and resolve everything. Uh, do you think the timeframe between now and the fifth is, is a practicable one for for resolving all these issues? It just seemed to me it was not.
Hmm, no, I don't, I don't think. With everything that has to be discussed and agreed and all, not that it can't be, but I think we're talking two weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just don't think that's, that's realistic. Jim, if you wanna add anything, go ahead.
Well, I would, I would just say that, you know, we, we'll get through much of it, but, you know, what, anything else that needs to be agreed to would be considered conditions on the approval.
Right.
At that time.
Yes, thank you.
I I don't think it's reasonable to expect that we'll resolve the entire stormwater management of this project in the next two weeks before the next meeting. Um, but I think that we can agree that they will, they will abide by all of the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. I was actually about to suggest the very same thing, and they will, we'll try to resolve as much as we can prior to the fifth. But to the extent that there are, uh, issues that we just can't resolve by then, those would be conditions of approval.
Okay.
And and just a point of clarification for the next meeting, it's, uh, November fifth. Do we have a, a start time for that meeting?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I think Mr. O'Donnell wanted to say something. No, oh, then, well, then I, I, I wanted to say something. I just, Janet is, 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 she, she, uh, wrote to me that her computer died, but that she thought we got the gist. And I think we did get the gist. So I, I actually wanted to just, uh, pick up on that. Which is that, you know, I, I think she, she put the question to us as, you know, to to all of us on this board and also as, you know, you know, appointed members and elected officials. And I, I think, um, I mean, for me personally, obviously, as I said, putting that many people, um, uh, on, on a site, there will be an impact. And I, I will say on behalf of counsel that, you know, uh, the decisions we've had to make in the context of our affordable housing settlement have, um, all been about, um, maximizing the benefits and minimizing the risks and the negatives. And I, I think we've, um, tried to do that with this site. And, you know, we certainly would prefer to have that level of density built on, um, a site like this where it is primarily on, um, what was already impervious service and a, and a built environment rather than, uh, for example, in the middle of, um, uh, one of the land wind sites. Or, you know, one of our preserved, uh, well, not preserved, but one, one of our more environmentally sensitive areas. But I, I also, you know, I think we all rely on, um, you know, the, the, the appointed members of the board and the elected members of council. We are not experts. And so in to, to Janet's question about, do we trust the applicant? I, I think, you know, that, that's why we do go through this process and why we have the reports of our BCCs and why we have, um, I mean, I can say that our staff has put an extraordinary amount of time into this. I mean, really, um, they have put a huge amount of work. And so I, I think, and we, we have to rely on, on our staff in, in coordination with our boards, committees and commissions. So I think maybe, you know, for the next meeting, it'll be helpful if our staff could, um, you know, try to, uh, provide some reassurance to people like Janet who are, have a lot of anxiety. And I think, you know, understandably so about, um, a project of this size being built close to, to their homes. And, you know, I, I think that they, the neighborhood has been quite reasonable. But to the extent they can be reassured and have, you know, our staff say we've, you know, we've looked into the lighting, we've looked into the noise, we've looked into the, you know, as, as much progress as, as can be made to get to, um, reassure neighbors that their houses won't be flooded and that, you know, I, I think that would be, um, something that would be very helpful at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, so Michael and Jim and Derek, you're, you're all on notice. So, um, uh, but I think your points, yeah, are very well taken. I think it would be a good exercise in a lot of ways. So, um, anybody have any final thoughts before I entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. La Place?
Yeah, I just, I may not be recalling this correctly, but I think that, um, Mr. Wolf, when he was talking about the report from Sprab, may have buried the lead, cuz I remember in the first page of the report, it did say that Sprab actually was endorsing the project and then listed recommendations. I just think that's important to have on the record.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Anything else?
I think we understood the, the limitations of the prior agreement. And within that, we think it's a very good effort generally.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock. It's the witching hour.
Move to adjourn. No second. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Good night, everybody.
Aye.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.